You're live.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brookline School Committee meeting on January 7th. Happy New Year to everyone. That's our first time meeting in the new year. And it's good you showed up today. We had quite the day yesterday in the country and I'm glad we're here to help each other and support each other in democracy in action, actually, even at the local level, at this school committee level. So, thank you for your participation. I think we'll start with administrative business. We have one consent agenda item. That's the school committee meeting for minutes from the December 17th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Andy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I know we have to do, are there any comments, corrections, additions? I had one. Robin, I think it says on section four, the response to surveys that Claire did, I think it said 12,000. Yeah, you'll fix that. I think there's just extra zero in there. So, if you can fix that, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll vote. Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer, welcome.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Is Dimitri here yet? No? Okay. Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And I vote yes as well. Okay. Now we'll go to the interim superintendent's report. Dr. Marini?
That's great. I hope you can give me a minute or two here because I wanted to give the committee and the community a little window into my day today. Today, Suzanne, you mentioned what happened yesterday in Washington. And the impact of that in schools is sometimes cannot be calculated. And it was, I don't know how everybody else felt, but, but I was, I felt it was surreal. I mean, is this really happening? As I was watching it, I mean, is this really happening? And then I started thinking about teachers and students, knowing that students would, from the very youngest to, to the, to the Claire Gallians here, that, that had, they want to, they're going to need to express their feelings about this and they need to do that in a, in a safe way with, with adults. I think they do it depending on, on the age group. Well, you know, really, I was, I visited schools today. And I was really amazed. The principals had met last night virtually and they were planning, what are we going to do when, when students come to school? How are we going to support the staff? How are we going to support students? How are we going to allow them to have conversations, to talk with each other in a safe and yet authentic way, age appropriate? And Gabe McCormick and Jen Martin put together, in the midst of what was happening, they put together a document that was user-friendly for teachers to be able to have a resource to use as, to, to help them organize their thoughts and engage students in, in discussion. They put that together. They went right to work at it while the world seemed to be devolving right in front of us. But you know, and there's a couple of stories I want to tell. And, and one is that I went into one class with a teacher. I was with Jen Fuller. And the teacher was, was herself struggling with, oh my God, what's going on? And yet she had her students, very age-appropriate, they were doing a journal. And so she let me read a couple of the journals and, and one of them was on the prompt, what would you do to make America better? And the student wrote back, it was beautiful. I can vote. And I thought, wow, this, this, we're in good hands here. We are. We're in really good hands. And then as we were walking a little further, bumped into a teacher who was preparing his classes and he was totally engaged in, in what he was doing. And he said, when he came in, he had the information, very appreciative. A number of teachers mentioned the document that Gabe created. But this teacher said, I wanted my, my students who are, who are home and those who are in person to be together for this moment and this morning and had a conversation with them. And really was totally engaged in helping them to, to process. And, and I went from building to building and I didn't get to all of them, but I got to a number of them. I got to four of them. And I was, I was thinking and talking with teachers, although nobody, not one complaint, not one teacher complained about one thing. But here they are, dealing with COVID. And what does that mean for them personally, their families, their teaching? That comes with a lot of stress. And are they teaching hybrid? Are they teaching remote? And then they have to deal with all the changes because things keep changing. And, and then they have to keep adjusting to those changes. So, you know, they've become pretty flexible and nimble, but there's a lot of stress with that. And then add on to that, what happened yesterday and their own feelings about that. And they had to put that aside in order to help students, and which they just did admirably. And I was thinking, you know, we really do rely on teachers and teachers make a difference. And, and, and how important a teacher is to every student. Think about that. So I said, geez, they're important to every student and they're important to families. Families are connecting with, with teachers and they want to know, not so much is my kid learning, but is my kid safe? And is my kid welcome? Does, does my child feel as though they belong to something? And so I said, you know, if, to the community and everybody here, if you're wondering, when you send your children to school, if they are in good hands, let me tell you, let me tell you, in Brookline, they're in good hands. So, that was my visits to the school today that I wanted to start off with. And then I have to get to some other stuff. The, this is sort of mundane, but I really feel as though I have to say it anyway. Snow days. I, I thought Wednesday being remote, I thought, wow, that's a great thing. We're, we're remote anyway. And that would, that would work. Well, the feedback I got tells me clearly does not work. I got feedback from teachers. I got feedback from everybody who's willing to give me feedback, but it was consistent. So therefore, I have to make an adjustment. And I still want to go with remote. We'll see what happens if we have another snow day. However, the snow, the, the, the snow day will be the day that it is, the, the remote day. In other words, if it snows on Monday, we'll go remote, but it will still be Monday. Won't be early release. It'll be a full day. We'll just teach in a remote format. Teachers' comments really said that if, if you, if you make it all Wednesday, you interfere with the sequence of our teaching. And then that messes us up big time. And I think kids would just soon be home rather than remote. But, you know, we're, we're trying to see what happens on the other side. So, I, I got the feedback, making an adjustment and saying a silent little prayer that we don't have any more snow, but if we do, that the remote will work okay. And, and I also wanted to talk about two more things. One is the MOA has been agreed upon, signed off, and is being implemented. And part of the MOA is that we have these two early release days for teachers so that they can continue to plan their, their classes. Because don't forget, you know, most of them are teaching in two different formats, sometimes simultaneously, to be able to plan their classes to maintain the integrity of the program with, with the appropriate amount of rigor. So those days have been put in to give the teachers that planning time. And the consequences, the cohort A and cohort B, Michelle Herman has worked really hard to balance off the cohorts A and B so that they would have equal time of in-person learning. And so we've worked hard on that and it's, it's, it's yet another change. So that creates a whole other different level for everybody. But it is and we, we're moving forward with that. And the last thing that, that I want to talk about, if you will allow me to think out loud, I really just want to free associate here for a minute, if it's okay. Because, because I don't have, I, I keep thinking about this as, I don't know whether you've taken logic classes when you were taking your mathematics, you know, the if-then kind of thing, if and only if, and, and all of that stuff. Well, that's what this feels like to me. And this is like the returning of the first grade students full-time. And so let me say from the outset, it is a desire, it is a goal to return student, first grade students, you know, whether we get the second and third grade, we'll see. But it is a goal to get those first grade kids in, in school. So here's sort of the issues. January promises to be, from all accounts, difficult in terms of the spike. So we're not reducing the six-foot distance. We're, we're not doing that till we have a level of, of confidence around that. And if we keep the six-foot distance, the space needs, they just, they, they're just real and they are there and they don't allow, I spent a lot of time dealing with that. They don't allow without additional staff and space. We, in order to move, to, to reduce to the six feet to the three feet, I'm hoping that the vaccine will be available and so too does the commissioner. He was on the call today. But I'm not 100% certain when that vaccine is going to be available. And so there's no real straight line that, that I could say, on this date, we're going to return the first grade. And, and here's just another complication, which is somewhat related. That's actually related. We're going to give students and parents an opportunity, this, the last opportunity to make a, a switch from the Remote Learning Academy to hybrid or vice versa. And everybody should know that it is a goal to get the first grade back in full-time. Everybody should know that. I don't have a date certain that I can do that. I just do not have a date certain. And I absolutely cannot commit to something that I can't deliver on. I, I can't do that. That would, that would feel to me disingenuous. If I had to say that, trying to get a date certain, but a lot of variables. So, but parents who have to make a decision about whether to switch from remote to RLA or vice versa, I mean, or the hybrid or vice versa, then need to know that the system is working on returning first grade. So now the parent may say, well, if I want to return to first grade, maybe I should stay in the hybrid. But, you know, I really think that I want to go to the remote. And whatever decision they make, it's really important that they make the decision with the full knowledge that the system is endeavoring to go full-time with first grade. And if you were to say to me, which I'm sure that, you know, if there were 1,000 people, 999 would want to say, when are we going to bring the first grade back in? And I would love more than anything to be able to say, on this date it's going to happen. And then we can put all the pieces in place. Two-week notice for this, three-week notice to have the, the committees in place that we have to have and do the appropriate kind of planning. But I can't say that. So I struggle with trying to answer a question that I don't have the answer to. So that's why I'm thinking out loud with the if-then. If the vaccine is here and it's making it, it has an impact, yes, we can reduce the distance. And if, 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 you know, ironically, if enough people were switching from hybrid to remote, well, that would leave fewer kids in the class. If it went the other way, where too many went from remote to the hybrid, huh, then we wouldn't be able to do it. So that's, so there's two messages I would, I would like people to hear from this. One, it is a goal to get the first grade back. That's unapologetic. We want to get that first grade back. I do not have a date certain on, on when that will happen. And the third thing is the commissioner's going to come up, come out with new guidance. At least that's what he said today. He's going to be coming out with new guidance soon, which, which is going to address this very issue in turn, in, in terms of getting more students back into school. So I think, I think Suzanne, right now, that's all the news there is to print.
Okay. So I would guess, Jim, that there are a few committee members who would have, either like to throw out some questions or just make some comments. So why don't we let people do that if that's okay?
Absolutely.
And we'll just take people one at a time and let everybody have at least one chance to do this. So I see Helen's hand. So Helen, go right ahead.
Thank you. I got it up first. Jim, thank you. I mean, your goal is my goal and I think the rest of the committee's goal. And the sooner the better, certainly. The one thing I would caution us is not to think three-six, three feet, six feet, but there's five feet, there's five and a half feet, there's four and a half feet. You know, there's many different iterations on that. And I think that we need to think about that. Kids who are in pods outside of school, can they be closer together in school? Those sorts of things to try and be creative with the space we have.
Yeah.
And not to forget that we do have the ability to use the Clark Road classrooms too, if needed. Those would be my, my comments.
Yeah. Thank you. That, that, those, those are great comments. And I have to be reminded not to forget that it's not an either or, a six or a three, but we have some gradations in there. That's good. That's good.
Who else would like to comment or ask a question? Jennifer?
I want to say thank you, Dr. Marini, for, for continuing this conversation. I know that it's really important, especially for our youngest learners. I think that, so I, I guess I had that one comment to say thank you. It's a lot of hard work and a lot of people are doing a lot of planning and it's really difficult work navigating all of this. So I appreciate that. And I, I, I understand there are gradations and I, and I'm very hopeful that things will improve. I want them very much to improve with the vaccine or with that. But right now, it's a really tough time. And so I just want to cautious us to caution us to, to just be, you know, we really need to see how things play out before we, as you said, before we commit decisions. There's a lot of variables about what's happening right now in our community and in the state and nationwide. I did have one question that's a little bit, that's popped into my head based on some, some in, information and emails and feedback that I've gotten. And I'm just wondering how our beep enrollment plays into this. So there's been some recent questions and, and we may not have those answers, but if we could think about that and, and sort of get, maybe come back around at another time about the beep enrollment and space and beep and whether or not there's a community need for space and if we have it. And I'm just thinking about like Clark Road and are we using all of those for beep spaces? Could we use those for other classrooms? Just, you know, being creative with that space.
All right. Great. Thanks.
Who else would like to say something? Andy and then Mariah. Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. This is a question for Dr. Marini. So like in your thinking here, is there sort of a bright line between first grade and second grade? Or, or are you thinking in terms of possibly bringing back multiple grades at once simply by relaxing the distancing rule when you feel comfortable doing that?
Yep. Great, great, great question, obviously. If I had my druthers, we'd go one through three, to be honest with you. But I don't, I don't know what you mean by a bright line. Is there a stop line between one and two? No. But I, I think that if we can, if, you know, like if we can make it for first, we can, it's like, you know, New York, New York, if we can make it here, you can make it anywhere. If we can make it for first grade and make, and make it work so people feel safe, then my experience has been, and across the district, I would ask anyone, and, and Claire, you're going to be my, my canary in the mine here, that initially going into the building was very threatening, very threatening. But the more people are in the buildings, the more comfortable they are and the, and the more they feel that it's okay over, over time. So first grade coming in and then moving to the other grades as well, Andy. But we would like to do that. It all depends on the variables, but we would like to do that not, you know, like months and months apart, but be able to move them in, get the first grade settled and then move to the other grades as, as expeditiously as we can. And, but herein lies my problem. And, and this could be my problem. I'll own it completely. I start thinking about this and then I get energized around it. And then I give off the vibes like it's going to happen tomorrow. And then when I start doing the planning, I say, aye, aye, you know, I, so, so looking at the timing piece of it, I, I, I want to, I want to manage expectations. But I also want to let people know, it is a goal that we are not walking away from. Implementing it is proving to be one heck of a challenge. That's what I'm saying.
Mariah, your turn.
Thanks, Suzanne. Thank you, Jim, so much for, for bringing this up. And it's so, it's so important. I want to, I want to emphasize what I think Andy was saying in your response, which is that it doesn't stop at first grade. I think that we all would agree that there's a big difference between the younger elementary students and the high schoolers, you know, in terms of risk factors also, right? I mean, that's what the science is telling us is that it's different. But, but when we think about, I personally don't feel comfortable with this idea of only first grade. And I also, I think we should be going higher. I, I, my druthers or your druthers at minimum, if not at least through third grade, perhaps through fifth grade. I also, I want to add that my recollection of one of the things that we heard in August from the scheduling, the staff who run the schedules in each building, was that every time a grade goes in, they have to rebuild the schedule. So I hope we don't do it first grade, they have to rebuild the schedule, then second grade, they have to rebuild the schedule again. We're making that, that work for them. I understand. It's pretty momentous by having basically new schedules every week or two. And so I hope we can be, be thinking about that. And, and I completely appreciate what you're saying about January. We, we have a lot of, of road in front of us in January. However, the reality is that, that this is a big shift turn and we have to plan for our plan, right? Like we have to decide what we want because it's going to take, you know, there's, it's going to take probably a good month to rebuild schedules, get everything going. And then we need to, so we need to say, well, and I'm making this up and I'm sure I'm skipping some steps, but you know, if, if we can anticipate that teachers are going to be vaccinated by, you know, the end of February or mid-February, then in two weeks past that, we can go ahead with what we need to do or whatever it's going to be. But I just feel like we need to say what our plan is so that as soon as we feel comfortable, we can flip the switch and start to go through those steps. Because if we wait until, wait until the, you know, whatever that trigger is to then start to plan, we're going to spend so much time planning. Like we had to do in August and
Yeah.
we don't want to do that. We have the luxury, quote unquote, of time right now. So it's such as it is. And I don't want us to lose that. On the same note, I wanted to just reflect on the plan for snow days.
Yeah.
And say that a, a true snow day taken now might result in an actual school day at the end of the year, right? Like might result, so, so we might be trading a remote school day for a real school day if we take an actual
I hear you. I hear you.
And so, and, and I feel sad about this idea of, of not having, of kids not having any of the snow days again because of the joy we talked about, the joy of the treat and for teachers too, right? For everyone, this joy of the treat. So, so I don't, I don't know what to make of that. But, but again, I just think about whatever we can be doing to get more kids into school as soon as possible. And then, and having those as many days as we can be in-person days, including those snow days. That's really great. And I really urge you, hopefully, we're not going to stop at first grade and we're going to do multiple grades at the same time to facilitate the scheduling and planning and to start that planning early so we're ready to flip the switch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mariah. I'm going to do David and then Dimitri. David?
I also want to thank you, Dr. Marini, for all the hard work you're doing with this. To bounce off of the points that Mariah made around the timetable of vaccinations, do we have some idea from conversations with the health department or others when our educators could be vaccinated? Because to me at least, that's sort of the critical threshold here because I see no reason why we couldn't bring everyone back if our educators were vaccinated.
Yes.
So do you have some idea on the timetable there?
Well, the commissioner said today, he said February to April. And, and he acknowledged that was a wide gap. But I, that was as, as far as he was willing to go. But I know that Trish has been in communication, Tricia Laham has been in communication with Dr. Jett around this as well. So I, those are the dates that I have. But drilling down into, you know, can we, can we, can we do better than that? I know that the, the, the nurses were elevated from second tier to the first tier. And the, the educators are in the second tier, but that was, that was the range he gave today.
And I can understand how space, current space constraints might limit us to only bringing back a grade or two sooner than that vaccination period. But I'm wondering whether there could be a similar effort made at the high school to try to get ninth grade back full-time, for instance? Do we have adequate space at the high school that could possibly accommodate that by using cafeterias, auditoriums, gyms for certain classes? Because our, our ninth graders also need to sort of be more oriented into high school life and, and abbreviated eighth grade as well, of course. So I, while I appreciate this focus on first grade in the, in the elementary schools because of those space constraints.
Yeah.
I think we could be trying to pursue something parallel at the high school level.
Yeah, I, I know that ninth grade has been something that you've been, right from the very beginning, you, you've been concerned about the ninth graders. I'll, I'll, I'll have to do the homework on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Dimitri?
Yeah, I'm you.
Thank you, Jim. As everybody else said, Jim, what was your timeline? Were you thinking that you could get something done before the February break or are we talking post-February break?
For first grade?
Yeah. And actually, in my mind, I think you should go with your idea of doing grades one, two, three. So I think you should bring.
Yeah.
It's just go bold.
Yeah. I, I, I think in terms of being real, it would be after February vacation.
Okay. So we're talking so that, so we could, so again, let's assume that we were to do more than one grade. You are proposing that we really would have a plan in place that by March, basically, we would have.
I would love to see a plan in place in March. I would, I would love to see. And you know, Dimitri, I, the, the one thing that's, that is consistent here is I keep being asked that question. So I know that it's not going to go off my radar screen. It's, it's something that I have, that I will continue to be, be looking at and be pushing all over the place. So the answer to your question is yes, I would love to have a plan in place by March. I, I think Mariah is right that you can't, you can't plan in the moment. It takes a long time. So doing the planning for the plan is, is an appropriate thing to do. And I just want to say it again, at the risk of boring everybody. I hate like heck to put a plan in place that people say, ah, that's what we're doing. And then we get there and we can't do it. And I'm like, oh, you're like, so planning for the plan is a, I think a wise thing to do. And I, I think that your timeframe on that, Dimitri, is it, it lines up with my thinking on it. And, and so, you know, we'll, we'll, the, the hurdles that are in place after that, maybe we can start chipping away at them if we have a plan to plan. So let, let, let me leave it there. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm totally okay with that. I, I actually would think, actually, even if we could accelerate it so that those kids were back in schools right after the February vacation, that would be ideal. But of course, that's, that's yours, for yours to manage. But I would even want to see it even happen even earlier.
Barbara?
I just think we need to be careful here. I think it's very important to have a plan in place. But I think that we need to pay very close attention to who is getting vaccinated and when it has actually happened. Because you will hear, this group can be vaccinated. But in fact, does that really happen? How many people in that group get vaccinated? So I just think we have to be practical and think about how these vaccinations are going to get to the teachers. Is it going to be up to them to get it from their healthcare? Is the town going to do it? How is that piece going to happen? Because no matter what we say about our plans and what the state says about teachers coming first, the, the, everything depends on how the vaccinations actually do in fact happen. how the vaccinations actually do in fact happen. So I would just be careful to keep that in mind before we set our ideas in stone, so to speak, because things can say, yes, teachers should get vaccinations by this point, but will it really happen? And, uh, I don't think we know that yet.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Uh, Susan, your turn.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to wait until we had gotten through this part of the conversation, because I wanted to go back, uh, to your first comment, um, in the superintendent's report and just thank our principals and our educators, um, for their leadership, um, today on a very difficult day. Um, I just think that, you know, we can't sort of walk past the fact that, you know, yesterday's armed insurrection in our nation's capital was just historically unprecedented. And, and there's so much to be said on that, but I do, I do feel the need to elevate one point, which is that, you know, there has been such powerful overwhelming video evidence of, um, how yesterday's criminals were treated, um, versus how people of color have been treated. Um, and the word that keeps coming to my mind is shocked but not surprised. Um, in the sense that we, we, in my mind, I, 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 I feel like it's so important that we not lose our ability to be shocked. And we not, we also not be surprised. Um, and some of the, I can't believe this is our country sorts of things. It's like, well, this, this is our country, it's been our country, um, and, and this is what reality is. And so just with the videos of some of the armed criminals and traitors, right? Jogging past police officers into the Capitol, um, and then even more shocking footage, again, shocking but not surprising, walking out slowly cheering, doors being held open for them. And I just, I think that the, the moral clarity that this moment needs is not only a big, you know, sort of lots of big questions about, about our democracy and our country, but for me personally, I just think it's very important to everyone in our community. Um, especially our students of color, especially our families of color, educators of color, that, that we see this, right? We, we see this, we acknowledge it, we speak against it, we, and we sort of not just keep going. Um, and so I, I want to thank the educators again. I wanna thank you for putting it at the top of your superintendent report. And I just, I, I hope and expect that this is part of an ongoing conversation of, of what it means to be a student educated to, uh, to be a citizen in the world, sort of our, 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 the mission of, of our district. And so I guess I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk past that. Um, I guess sort of in, in tandem with that, you know, one of the things that I've heard that's, that is, it, I don't wanna say it's as important, um, but I, well, it may be more important. Um, is the amount of synchronous education that our, our students are getting, um, across pre-K through 12, right? And so specifically in this case, one through 12 or two through 12, however you wanna frame it. But the ability for our students to be with our educators and not learning from a screen and not learning, you know, not just doing glorified homework, um, but really getting synchronous instruction, not just the bare minimum from the state, but really the ability for our educators to connect with our students, um, in a synchronous way, especially in moments like this. For me, as much time as we've spent on buildings and PPE and ventilation and, and, and everything, testing, and I've spent all that time on it too. I just think that centering that, continuing to center that relationship, um, and synchronous time um, with educators and students together, uh, to be able to do this really hard work that we, that we just talked about, that, that we need to do in this country. So at any rate, I, I appreciate the conversation about first grade. I really do. I, I just think that the, the broader picture and specifically educator time with students across our, our district is just so important. And I, I don't want that to get lost.
Okay, great, great, great.
And so, um, we're gonna wrap this up, um, because we'll, we'll be revisiting some of this as we go through the night. Um, I did wanna, just a couple of things I'd like to say. Uh, I, I really, uh, am looking forward to the day when we can have especially first through third back. That's really a high priority for me, as it is for many, many school committee members. I'm wondering in that plan of plans, if for the vaccinations, if the earlier grade staff can get them before maybe some of the upper grades. And, and I understand ninth grade is very important as well. So it's just something, that's part of a, of why we would have a plan is to figure out how we might be able to, um, make that happen. And then, and then the third thing I would just like to say, we didn't, you just, uh, dwelled on it for a minute. Uh, it is, uh, talking a little bit what Susan was saying about the amount of time that synchronous learning. And I know that there's been some questions from some, uh, particular students' families about, you know, their minutes and, and, and what the programs look like. And I would just like to recognize Michelle Herman, who has done a lot around this, uh, to make sure that we are giving not just a minimum, but what we think is important here in Brookline. And that if there are particular cases where, uh, families have concerns about their child's uh, program or number of minutes, uh, that I think, Jim, you've suggested that perhaps they should contact their schools to talk about that, maybe the teachers and then the principals. You want to just say a word about that? Cause I know we're getting some emails about it. Not a lot, but a few.
Sure, sure. I, I, I think the, uh, the, as in all, uh, these kinds of issues, that if the parent were to contact the, uh, the teacher or the principal, that those, that's the place where the most impact is going to happen in terms of, of adjustments. They, and then of, of course, if that, and that satisfactory, Michelle really has been a leader in this, as you have said Suzanne, and, uh, she has enormous credibility with the principals as well as with the teachers, uh, so that, uh, if, if parents talk with them, m- most often this stuff gets resolved at the building level. Uh, anyway, but talking with the principal would be the ideal way to go. And then, uh, and then of course, uh, calling Michelle. And then, then we're gonna have conversations about it as soon as Michelle gets, uh, gets called, if, if there are a number of issues and she's seeing a pattern, we're gonna get, uh, in, in, involved with it. But it's so much better to go to the teacher and the principal first. Uh, I, I, everybody, uh, tends to respond better when, when they're, uh, involved at the first level.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mariah, you want the last word on this?
I just, I just wanna ask a quick question about that. So for, for families now who think that their, that, that their, that their kids' number of synchronous minutes, either live or remote synchronous.
Yeah.
Is not meeting what the upcoming state guidance is, which is the 35 hours over the 10-day period.
Right.
Should start with their teacher. And if they don't get an answer that they find okay from the teacher, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. Start with the teacher, then if it's not, okay, it goes to the principal. Then if it's, if they still aren't getting an answer from the principal, they go to Michelle?
Yep.
Correct? And then to you?
And then to me. Yeah.
Okay. And so for parents who are listening, it's Michelle Herman. So people, I'm just trying, because people have been asking and we wanna make sure that they're clear to them. So it's good to.
Her name's right there on the screen.
Right there on the screen.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Jim, and thank you, Michelle.
It's probably MichelleHerman@PBSMA.org, like the rest of us.
That's great. That's great. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, oh.
Suzanne, I just said before we move on, thank you for saying that. That's, that's far more important to us than, than, than probably anybody really realizes. It's, it's so respectful, uh, to, to, to receive a phone call. Over the vacation, I had a, a, a few phone calls and, and I did happen to have a phone call with, with a, a parent who just, uh, needed some information about something. So I just asked, you know, have you had a conversation with the principal? No, hadn't thought about that. So he ended up having a conversation, uh, with, with the principal. And the principal was like, oh geez, I'll, I'll call that person. So, uh, you know, it, it feels so much, uh, I, I don't know, more like we're working together when we go, uh, through that way. So thank you, thank you for raising that. That's great.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comments. Robin, if we're ready. The first one person is Hajar Delshad, and then the, after that will be Carolyn Thall.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Hagar Delshad. I'm a physician assistant and mother of two daughters at Baker. Everything I will say, I ask you to understand that I'm the mother of two children first and everything else second. And quickly on the events of yesterday, I really wanna thank you for acknowledging the trauma of the day and recognizing the students betrayed by the separate treatment that was seen by, um, the force given on that day. I ask for you to call what happened in active terrorism and its perpetrators as terrorists. If my Muslim children hear that enough, they will understand what actual terrorism is. Your words matter and the words of school leadership matter. Terrorism is a very strong word, but it has been deployed unjustly against people of my faith for decades. I just ask that the words we use are appropriate for the actions that we've seen. I wanna thank you all for the incredibly hard work that you've put in to get our students back in the buildings. My children have really loved their in-person days a lot. They, uh, appreciate that you've reached an MOU with the educators union. We were incredibly hopeful that we would hear after this agreement was reached, that we would hear announcements of more days in person for our kids. Instead though, we actually learned that they'll lose more in-person time. They have more half-days, planning days, holidays and changes in their cohort days. Early releases in two and a half hours. I'm just not sure what Brookline children get out of all of this. We, the parents are very frustrated. We see our kids with mental health challenges. They're disengaged and not interested in learning. There is most importantly, a lack of continuity, routine of structure, which are the foundations of successful and stable early childhoods. Really, it's enough. The parents wanna know how these changes are gonna benefit our children by taking away their access to in-person time. We have the most stringent mitigation measures above and beyond the requirements. We've had no in-school trans- transmission. We are gonna launch a $300,000 testing initiative. Why do we even have to wait for a vaccine? But on that note, myself and many volunteers in the Medical Reserve Corps will begin vaccinating first responders on Monday. And in a couple of more weeks, we'll be, we will be vaccinating the educators, which we're all very excited about. Teachers should be pri- prioritized for vaccinations. There's a 50% reduction in COVID infection within the 12 days that follow the first vaccine. You don't even have to complete the series to get that type of protection. So Dr. Merini and school committee members, we should not be only talking about what triggers schools to shut down, but what triggers schools to reopen too. I call on you to form a task force, including the school committee, parents, teachers, BEU representatives, the principals and the superintendent and panel four members to discuss and immediately work towards a concrete plan with timelines to return school, students to the buildings, which are a safe environment, a rollout plan for gradual return to school and a working plan separately for full return to instruction in the fall. The time to plan is now, not when all the milestones have been achieved. Make a plan with the best case scenario and we can adjust it if needed, but we can't create a plan if we never had one. Short of these, the district will have further enrollment drops and budget crunches and unfortunately, teacher layoffs. We don't wanna lose our beloved teachers or our beloved neighbors as they look to move to other towns who have found solutions. We want PSB to be strong, diverse, dynamic and healthy. Please do not let children down. Dr. Merini, you said it's important for teachers and students to be together, especially on days where they have to process so much trauma. Switching formats isn't even working for teachers. Let's please work to get students back in the buildings and have everyone at the table so we can be together as a community instead of just participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, you're up, and then Danielle De Silva.
Hello. Uh, Carolyn Thall, I'm a BHS and Baker parent, and I'm a town meeting member in precinct 16. Before I start what I had planned, I wanna thank David for continuing to uh, be really sensitive to how difficult this year is for ninth graders and how much is being lost, um, and how little connection there is for our incoming high schoolers, um, to BHS. I'm a little confused about the conversation about vaccination. I think vaccines are exciting. Um, I don't know when this became a, a, um, hinging point for reopening. I don't hear anybody saying that vaccination is gonna be required or mandated for staff. And I'm not saying that it should be or shouldn't be. But unless it's, can be, I don't understand how vaccination can be, um, a policy hinge. So I, I, I hope you'll flesh that out a little bit more. Um, I also would like to, uh, thank everybody who questioned the idea of only having as a goal, bringing back first grade, uh, when it's decided that distance can be reduced. I don't understand the logic there. Maybe I'm missing something. But if it is decided that it's safe to have students and staff at less than six feet in the building, I don't, I'm not c- clear on the logic of why that would only apply to first or second or third or fifth graders. Um, and generally speaking, I would really like to call on Dr. Merini and school committee at this point to start communicating directly with parents and caregivers and students for that matter. It, it's the parents and caregivers and students who it's your charge to represent in your positions. Um, I would like to see you start scheduling listening sessions with every school community. Many parents feel in the dark and disconnected and upset. Um, and it's not because we are not able to make the past 10 months into a teaching moment for children. It's because this situation remains dire. Um, and there's been very little progress. Children are not getting what they need. Parents have many questions and concerns, um, and they should be heard. Um, parents feel that a lot of time has been spent dealing with an adversarial union situation. And we need you now to pivot to have your perspective be on children. Dr. Merini, in your opening remarks just now, you said parents wanna know if their kids feel like they belong to something.
Yep.
I'm sorry, but I don't think they do. They haven't been part of school for 10 months. You wanna know how it feels when we, does it feel good when we send our kids to school? We barely send our kids to school. There is very little time in school. Um, and I would also like to ask, in addition to you setting up listening sessions with communities, is to please find a way to add back more student-facing time. I hope that you can eliminate the early release conference days for sixth through 12th graders who do not have conferences. And I think many parents would like to see the 70 minutes that were cut from Wednesdays be brought back. If you just signed away any chance of adding time back for students with the MOA that was agreed to, then that should be exceptional, made exceptionally clear to parents and children, so we can stop wishing for something that's been negotiated away. We need to know what is possible and we'd really need to not just be hearing the word goal, but to see action that gives students more time. And it's all about seeing what's happening in this district from the perspective of children and what do the children need? And, um, I, I, that's not the way I hear the conversation. And of, in terms of, well, you know what? I'll stop here.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, Danielle, you're up, and then Akisha Lanfield.
All right. My name is Danielle De Silva. I'm the single parent of two children at the Baker School, an educator at a private school in Brookline and a town meeting member in precinct 16. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of single parent and single caregiver families in Brookline who I feel are suffering disproportionately as a direct result of the choices made by the school committee, the BEU and the central administration. I'd like to ask all of the decision makers with young children or who've ever had young children on this call to imagine for a moment what it feels like when your partner is away for a week. It's hard, right? You may have been compelled after several days of parenting alone to reach out to your friends and family who are in this situation every- You may have been compelled after several days of parenting alone to reach out to your friends and family who are in this situation every day, expressing your admiration, support, and maybe even adding the line, "I have heard no less than 1,000 times, most of those since March, I don't know how you do it." Well, here's the thing, neither do I. I don't have special magical unicorn powers. None of us do. And the choices made by the public schools of Brookline make my life feel close to impossible on a daily basis. It might not feel like a big deal to switch a bunch of days or add some more early release days, a separate issue that I know others will address, with a few weeks' notice. But after having spent the past 10 months rearranging and calibrating every single second of every single day in order to ensure my children's safety and well-being, while also maintaining my own employment, well, these changes in that context are a huge deal. Have any of you tried explaining to your employer the specific situation in Brookline? Other towns have a consistent and clearly articulated plan. I've committed to physically being present in my own school on specific days all year. Now what am I supposed to do? Call in more favors, expose my kids to more people, take away their own much-needed consistency? What level of executive functioning is expected of people during this time? And also, two family households who now have to change their custody arrangements, pickups, back and forth, who has what at whose house, and wears a Chromebook charger and the math workbook and the extra gloves. The mothers, who are already most at risk of catastrophic long-term economic consequences, do pick up the bulk of this extra burden. In addition, most of us can't access multi-generational family resources we may have relied on in the past without risking the health of people we love. And extended-day programs in our schools are in danger of closing this spring. I have not heard any larger conversation about how vitally important these programs are for our children and families. So let me ask you this question. Do you imagine that all families in Brookline are wealthy, traditional families with a stay-at-home mom who's available to pick up kids at any time? I don't think so, because that's not what a family looks like anymore. But it does seem to be the default family around which decisions are made and priorities are organized. The system is not adapting to what real people need, even in this emergency. Please acknowledge us when making choices that will have a disproportionate impact on our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Akasha, you're up next. And you're our last speaker.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to, my name is Akasha Lanfield, and I have two first graders in Brookline. I wanted to echo the sentiments expressed by all of the speakers tonight, really, including Danielle just now, who spoke eloquently about the impact on families, moms in particular, on single-parent households. These are really, truly huge struggles. And there, you know, there was even a comment months ago in August, I think, by Andy, that, you know, this was a staffing issue being pushed under the community. This is particularly true of families who have young children, and honestly, people are really, really struggling. And I know that there's a lot of sentiments to get the younger kids back, but there just hasn't been any action on that front. So thank you to all of the speakers who expressed, and the school committee members, and Dr. Marini, who expressed that commitment to continue working towards that. But if you can really please try to communicate with parents, it would help parents a lot to see some light and give some hope to their kids who are flailing. I did want to push back on the comments regarding synchronous learning that were expressed earlier. It's simply not happening for some grades. I can speak personally regarding first grade, but I know there are others. It was really encouraging to hear the presentations by at least one third-grade class and at least one fifth-grade class about the team teaching that was happening and the fact that there's basically no or little to no asynchronous. It's happening at the high school level, and that's amazing. But the reality is first graders are spending two days per week completely and utterly alone. If they're lucky and have a parent or a caregiver to sign them on at three different points for 10 minutes during the day, if you can count that as lucky, they may get 20 to 30 minutes at most of engagement with their teacher and peers out of six and a half hours. These are kids who have two, three, four-minute attention spans, and they are spending six and a half hours a day completely and utterly alone for 40% of their school week, if you can really call that school. Because for a lot of kids, it's not, especially for these, for single-parent households and for households where kids don't have someone who can handhold them all day long. So please do an inventory, because it does appear that there's a complete lack of awareness of the isolation that many of the youngest kids are experiencing. These are kids that cannot type a URL. They are not on social media. They don't have friends they can go out and hang out with. The isolation is profound. And that is also why a comment that, I think, the last school committee meeting, that no additional staff is needed, is so really shocking to families with young kids. I wanted to echo the sentiment pushing back on the vaccination topic, echoing what Carolyn said. When did vaccinations become a policy hinge? This is not supported by the science around the safety of schools. Everyone is obviously concerned about what's happening now in January, but many, many kids' health and well-being has been really on the back burner to a lot of political interests, a lot of other interests, despite the overwhelming evidence of the safety of schools, especially our schools here due to our vast mitigation measures. And from a scientific standpoint, you know, can panel four weigh in here, because there doesn't seem to be very much justification for hanging the return of the lowest-risk profile groups, like the youngest elementary kids, on vaccinations that are not going to be mandated for anyone. If the flu vaccine wasn't even mandated, this one, it seems impossible to believe that this one will be. So you know, it was also not a bar that was set for any of the thousands of schools that have been open for the past four to eight months. And it seems like this is a very politically motivated decision, if that's what the district is now implicitly deciding regarding vaccinations. Regarding spacing, you know, I know I have said this and others have said it as well, and I'm sorry to be a broken record, but most of the rest of the developed world is doing three feet or greater of distancing. And yes, that doesn't mean it's three feet. It could be three, or four, or five, or five and a half feet. But even private and parochial schools, including in Cambridge and here in Brookline, are at three to four feet in many cases. So, you know, Cambridge is now, in February, reducing spacing and bringing more grades back. So, you know, on the subject of planning and announcing dates, speaking of Cambridge, Cambridge and other towns have led with tentative dates. They've put the asterisks, and they've made the planning, they've done the planning well in advance. So the sentiment that we should wait and see how it plays out, which is what someone said earlier, I think that that's not something that that a lot of kids can sustain, nor a lot of families. Briarchies don't turn on a dime, so please do plan now. Cambridge and others are not waiting. The inaction and the lack of planning is a decision in and of itself, and it's a decision that prevents kids from being where they need to be. I don't think it's been mentioned tonight, but parents have asked for a number of things to be done, and it doesn't seem like there's been action on these fronts, and I know that budgets are tight, but hiring to, including to lead Brookline's youngest learners, who are spending so much of their learning time alone, can we try to see action on that front? Can we, these are just suggestions on how we can help learners. Utilize the student-teachers to lead remote days to cut down on the asynchronous time that so many of the young kids are doing. This is what Newton and other towns have done. I know it's not easy. I know there are challenges, but if we can look at those solutions, there was a teacher that reported that there are student-teachers waiting for placements. And I know that that means more work for more people, but if we're taking a student-centered approach, how can we get people to support, you know, especially college students who are so adept at technology? How can we overcome some of the hurdles so that they can help these kids who are struggling and handhold them a little bit during the day so that they're not completely alone? Can we revisit Wednesdays that many people feel should not have been taken away in the first place, or at least use Wednesdays on an additive basis? So instead of taking away cohort days from Cohort A, you know, add a Wednesday for Cohort B. Don't take it away from Cohort A. And I say that as a Cohort B parent. I just think it's really hard on, you know, cohort, it's hard on everyone to lose days. Let's not have time be lost. Let's look at time as being additive. And alternative spaces that has been mentioned, why haven't we done that yet? Clark Road or BEEP spaces or outdoor learning? I know that's harder now, but we had that all fall that we could have done. You know, let's make those plans now. And just a couple other suggestions on how we can help students. I already mentioned making time additive, planning now, team teaching all grades, not just some of them, some schools for some grades, to ensure that kids are spending more, not spending more than a fraction of time asynchronously. I talked about hiring the student-teachers. Yeah, I think that's about it. Adding in in-person time, adding in, as Carolyn and others have said, please add the in-person time instead of continuously chipping away at the in-person time, which is just so, so limited as it is. And just the proactive leadership to make plans now, like Cambridge and many, much of the rest of the developed world has done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Akasha. That's it for public comment. We're going to move into enrollment projection. Erin, are you, we're happy to see you still.
Still here. Still here, yeah. Sure, let me just share my screen.
So this is the enrollment projections that you're suggesting for next year, 21-22.
I mean, yeah, it's really just an update on enrollment and then more of an update on the survey that we sent out for families of students who have withdrawn.
Right.
But I'll give you, I'll give some kind of next steps around enrollment projections for the next year as well. Okay, so the objectives for the presentation tonight, myself and Megan Ganey will go through these slides. I will remind people about our October 1 submission to DESI. So the last time I presented to you, they were preliminary numbers. These will be our final numbers from October 1. I will highlight the Cropper and McGibbin forecast that we had completed last year. Megan will review the survey results from students and families who have withdrawn from Brookline this year. And then I'll talk a little bit about next steps, like I said, with projections moving forward into the 21-22 school year. So this should look familiar. I presented this the last time. The numbers, I think, maybe are one or two off from what our preliminary DESI numbers were for October 1 versus our final numbers. You can see grade pre-K through just past grade 12, 6,891 students. Again, we have that lower pre-K enrollment based on decisions about BEEP programming. And the numbers for K to 8, 4,703 students, and 9 through our special education population that goes past grade 12, 2,035 students. And I have the link at the bottom of the slides here, which we will post if all of this information is public on the Department of Ed's website now. So we, you can kind of go through that even school by school or subgroup by subgroup if necessary. So I'm highlighting the, these are the Cropper forecasts. As you'll remember, we hired Cropper and McGibbin last year to produce 10-year enrollment forecasts for us. Obviously, those didn't necessarily come to fruition based on the circumstances that we are in. And you can see the differences between our October 1 enrollment, their forecast, and then the difference by grade level. What I wanted to highlight here is, are the numbers for, the forecasted numbers for kindergarten and grade 1, because you'll see that for budget purposes, or our initial thinking around budget purposes for each school, that we will actually use the Cropper forecast for kindergarten and grade 1, thinking that these, that hopefully this population of students is more likely to come back or return or increase. But we will use the cohort survival methodology, which is essentially just rolling over grade to grade for students in grade 2 through 12. And some of the reasoning behind that is based on the data that we receive, that we receive from the withdrawn students and from what Megan and her team collects in the Office of Registration and Enrollment. So I'm going to turn it on over to Megan, and Megan, you just let me know when you want me to flip the slides, and I can do that for you.
Sure thing. So we did survey all families who withdrew students from PSB between June 20 of 2020 and December 14 of 2020. And so we went as live as we could to capture as much as we could. That covers 1,169 individual students with the caveat that a few of those might be duplicates, because a few parents would fill out the form twice for the same child. Can't control the slightly over-excited data there. So our survey was directed towards families. So if you have more than one child, we did not make them fill it out multiple times, so you're going to see some slight inconsistencies. But we got 413 families to respond. And we first wanted to find out about who's still here in Brookline. You know, many of our families who withdraw do leave the town. They are relocating. So we did find that 43% of those families who responded don't plan, they've left and they do not plan to return. We had 22 respondents say that they plan to return to Brookline. They've left and they plan to return. Either they retain their home and they're coming back to it, or they've, they're going to find a new home, return to their community here. And then a little over 51%, 50% remain residents here in Brookline, so they would be eligible to re-enroll if they so wished. Okay. So we also wanted to find out a little bit about the plans families might be having regarding their children if they've withdrawn. So of those families who are eligible, right, so now we're looking at the families who are either residents and/or plan to return. So that's the cumulative of those two groups. 99 families plan to not enroll, and the reason for that, 80% of them are planning to be in independent schools for next year, where they are currently. So they intend to retain that same enrollment in their private schools. 58 families are still deciding, so they're on the fence. They're not a hard yes or a hard no. So of those families, they're strongly considering remaining in independent schools. A bunch of families, about half, are still unsure what they want to do based on the situation with COVID. Some have been very specific in indicating that they will come back to PSB if and when we have full-time instruction. Period. If we don't have it, they're not coming back, or they'll wait till we do. Others want four days. Others want three days. It's, you know, very variable there, but there's a lot of uncertainty about what they plan to do, simply based on the changing circumstances. And as with all of our current residents, there's always the chance that they might relocate. So we've got 20% who might move on from Brookline due to their family circumstances. And about 7% of families are still considering homeschooling for their children for next year. 77 families directly said, yes, we're coming back, which is a lot more reenrollments than we see in a typical year, which is usually we see a handful of kids returning to Brookline High. And a few families who might be on sabbatical in other locations for a year or so. So this is drastically higher return for reenrollments. So of these families who are planning to re-enroll, I just wanted to sort of pull out some demographics for you that might be, you know, elucidating. So we have 205 students across 135 families that this is relevant to. 13 are planning to enroll kindergartners. And all of these kindergartners, I went back and double-checked, are not asking to repeat kindergarten. They are currently enrolled in early education programs. So these were either younger siblings of children who withdrew, or they were in BEEP and found different resources for this current year. We have 23 students who are interested in returning for grade 1. So this is our kindergarten cohort who chose not to attend kindergarten here in Brookline. Left not knowing what our plan was, perhaps in the summertime, found other arrangements. So that is a fairly strong return rate for our first graders. And then 46 students will be returning to Brookline High School across the four grades with a strong push towards grade 9, which that is, you know, typical. We would see that in a normal year, but definitely not 20 students returning. So that is a significant increase in folks planning to return to grade 9. And then lastly, this is based on parents reporting of where they believe their children will attend. You can see the location impact here. Obviously, Brookline High School being, you know, the You can see the, the location impact here. Obviously, Brookline High School being, you know, the, the one district school for our upper education students sees a fairly large impact, but you can see that Pierce School and Ruffin Ridley far seem, seem to far outpace families who are considering returning than say Baker, which is only six families or Lincoln, only six families. So there will be some disproportionate impact on individual buildings based on the, the families who plan to return.
Thanks, Megan. And just a reminder, those numbers that she presented are just of the families that said that they plan to return. And you'll remember that 51% of families were still undecided. So those numbers obviously could go up depending on what the 50%, 51% of those families. And then obviously, we didn't get a 100% response rate. So there are families that, you know, did withdraw and were just not, we, we don't know yet what their plans are. So as we're thinking about our next steps moving forward, I mentioned a couple of these the last time I presented about enrollment projections. I have been meeting with other district data directors to see how they're treating this year's enrollment. And honestly, most of them are delaying at least until March or April. Doing any sort of, you know, significant projection on what their enrollment would look like next year. The other important thing to know is that they're really thinking about just doing a projection for the next school year at maximum, maybe three years. You might remember that we, our report before the Cropper and McGibbin report was 10 years out. And so even if we do some sort of more statistical projection, I wouldn't recommend doing anything more than one to three years, given the situation and the climate that we're in now. When I spoke to our consultants that we hired last year, they actually recommended just skipping this year altogether. For, you know, many of the reasons that we've already discussed. But if nothing else, I do think we should pause until we have a better understanding of our kindergarten, kindergarten enrollment numbers. Enrollment is happening, you know, now until probably that Megan can talk more about this, but until February, until our numbers will be at least a little bit more finalized in March. And sorry, I should clarify, doesn't mean that you have to enroll by February. That's just when the majority of our families normally enroll in kindergarten. The second piece, until or if we have a better understanding of the virus, excuse me, infection rates with students of vaccine being distributed, et cetera. And then finally, until we have a second round of our open enrollment for the learning model change, which is going to happen in February. So you know, we might make different decisions if we see more families moving to the RLA than moving back to our brick and mortar schools. And as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, we thought it was important, you know, in consultation with Megan and Mary Ellen to use our projections or our forecasts numbers for kindergarten and first grade for budget purposes. Or even having some meetings next week as to whether or not we use, you know, that full projection number for each school or whether we, you know, do some calculation. You know, is it 80%, is it 60% of that projection? But we didn't feel that it was right to just use, for example, in kindergarten, the 488 or so number that we have for this year. When in prior years, our enrollment has been closer to 600 in the kindergarten range. And then for grades 2 through 12, we're just going to do that cohort survival that I talked about earlier. So that's it. And I'll stop sharing so that I can see if people have questions.
Okay, who has comments or questions? Mariah, go ahead.
Thanks Suzanne. Erin, thank you for the presentation and thank you, Megan. Do you mind actually putting the slides back up again just to show the one that, where it was the last year, the one that showed last year and this year numbers to show the reduction in students? Yes, right, exactly. So, so my question was like,
Sorry, I'm muted, sorry. This is showing not last year and this year, but it's showing our, our October 1, the projection and our, our forecasted numbers, yeah.
So, so I guess, well, I think the, the question is still more or less the same, even though I don't think the data is here of last year versus this year is if, if we were, like, we're down, is it roughly 800 students? Am I right off the top of my head in K8? And I guess my question is, even if we're only focusing on K and 1 to bring back sort of previous numbers, but like grades 2 through 12, you're talking about basing it off of this year and going ahead with cohort survival, right? But the numbers that we heard just now from Megan would indicate that we'll actually have somewhat larger of a return from that. So are we under, to me, it sounds like we're, we're going to be shorting ourselves if we're basing it, because cohort survival is more or less like 0.99 of the year before, 1.4. So we're going to be shorting ourselves by what sounds like hundreds of students if we were to do, if we were to base off of this year and roll forward on cohort survival.
I mean, I'll give you one caveat on the ninth graders is the survival rate for our eighth grade. We lose a lot of kids to private high schools. That's a normal thing. So that, that bump of it being 20 kids is probably not going to be statistically like a huge deal, to be honest. It's just more than we see in terms of kids we've seen before in the district coming back.
I wasn't that marveled by the high school numbers, actually. It was more thinking of what else is, what is happening, you know, it was a relatively small. What I, what I took away from what you presented was you had 400 families respond. And of those, you had about 200 kids coming back. And so I took that as a point five kid. And whether or not that's right or not, I don't know. But to me, that says that we, if we had 1,200 kids going, maybe we'll have half of those kids coming back. And so are we shorting ourselves by planning for hundreds of kids? Again, I'm, I mean, I'm just seeing these numbers now, but that was sort of my fear is that we're underestimating if we base on this year's numbers.
Yeah, I mean, also what I should have said at the beginning is that, you know, projections or forecasts in the first place are, you know, just what, just what they are. Projections are not, they're not final. And I think this year, it's, we're doing the very, very best that we can to come up with numbers that we think would be appropriate for budgetary purposes when we know that in reality, it will be closer to April, May, maybe even later than that. When we'll have a better handle on what our enrollment actually could be or what we could project it to be. I think one of the reasons why we decided with this K and grade 1, like I said, we're meeting next week, well, they're meeting next week to talk through whether or not we use that full, you know, 626 number you see there for kindergarten, whether that should be more like 80%. It's also in collaboration with schools and looking at the staffing that they have available, the space that they have available, what our class size and space could be. So I, I think it's a, there are a lot of different variables that we'll use when we're talking about enrollment for budgetary purposes. This, I, I do hear your point and I just wanted to just say that we're, yeah, we're doing the best we can with the, I think, the information that we have.
Thank you. Others who want to ask a question or comment? Yeah, Helen.
Thank you guys for the report. It's really very good. I'm wondering with the response, what was the response rate? I know you said it was 413, I think, families or individual responses. How many did we send out altogether? Or what was the response rate for that?
So the complication is that the responses, the survey was sent to every individual student who withdrew, because that's the information that we have. But we didn't want to burden families by asking them to fill it out four times if they had four children. So you're not going to see that nice one-to-one. The majority of families I know at least read the email. Even if they didn't respond, which is kind of shocking, actually. The response rate was pretty good, though, I will say. It was, it was a lot higher than I expected. They were given two reminders over the course of a couple of weeks and people were, were quite responsive for, especially considering the majority of, a lot of folks were gone and they're not coming back. It was very kind of them to let us know, you know, no, no, thank you. We're, we're no longer part of the community. I guess that shows the ties to the Brookline community that they'd be willing to fill the survey out for us.
Right. Okay. Also, one other piece, you said the 20 kids coming back to the high school was high, but my experience over the years, and maybe I'm going back too far, we've had more, closer to 50 kids who come back every year. But maybe that's changed and I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think in recent, in, in the last three or four years, the number of kids coming back for, for grade 9 is something more along the lines of, you know, 15 to 20 high schoolers. For the most part, there can be more, there can be less. This year, really don't know whether we'll lose as many eighth graders to private schools as we have in the past. That's always a big open question, too.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, I have to say that I'm struck that there's just a lot of unknowns. We're really, I mean, we're not throwing darts in the dark, but there's a little bit of, we really just don't know. And we may need to have some kind of contingency plans or something so that we could accommodate if we have additional students. On, on the other hand, if, if we don't need sections in a school, that will also be a conversation to have. Because that's all going to hit the budget as well. So, thank you. Thank you for this. I would say we'll stay tuned on this one, especially going forward.
Yeah, I do think that, that kindergarten number in March will be really valuable. I know that's a little bit later for budget purposes, but it, it will at least solidify things a little bit better, I think.
And even that will not be a, a strong, that won't be a high number come the end of February, early March. It will just be able to indicate whether we're on trend, higher or lower two years previous at that point. Because our kindergarten numbers are really, you know, we get about halfway by the end of the school year. And then the summer, we see, you know, at least 200 more kindergarteners if it's a 600 kindergarten class. So it's, it's the unpredictable nature of enrollment numbers. We really don't know until they're here. We just don't know. But I can tell you whether we're on trend.
Okay, thank you very much. Helen?
I have one other question. Do students who have left and then come back after we, they have to re-enroll, correct?
Yes, they do.
And did you also mention that in the survey when you sent it out to parents?
Yep, we are going to offer families some guidance. We're going to follow up with those families who are interested in re-enrolling. So we're going to give them some instructions. And my office is also going to provide a virtual information session to walk folks through that, let them ask questions, make them, make sure they feel comfortable with all their questions as best we can. If we don't know if we're going to have full in-person, I can't answer that question, but I can help them figure out how to navigate the process.
Right. Well, thank you. That's very great. That's great. That's really being proactive. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome to stay, of course, as long as you want, but you're certainly welcome to call it a night if, if your piece is done. I'm going to propose that we go, we skip number five and come back to it if that's okay, Dr. Marini. Because we're about a half hour behind and I know the base people are here. So the budget development people are going to stay no matter what anyway. So if we could just go to base, I think that would be probably.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think Dr. Marini and Mary Ellen Norman, I think you're, you're on for the discussion about the Brookline Adult and Community Education.
That's great. I think Mary Ellen's got a better handle on working with base for quite a while. So Mary Ellen, you want to take us through it?
No, I'm not going to take you through it, but I'm going to introduce the members of the Adult and Community Ed program that are here. Specifically, Michelle McBlone is going to walk through some slide presentation quickly that she provided to the finance subcommittee a few weeks ago. And we have members of the board here and I'm going to let her introduce the members of the board because I see some faces, but not all members are, are here. So and then there are two sort of two action steps for the committee after Michelle's presentation. One is the request to support the Adult and Community Ed program. This year, there, you'll hear from her that she, that they have a budget deficit, revenue deficit. And also there's a request as well to fund a particular audit and review. And I think we all, we are, we are sharing some concerns around, you know, a fund balance that had been, everybody's impression was that it was very large and, and now we're dealing with a deficit. So that is part of what, all, a part or most of what Michelle's going to cover. And so I'm going to let her start, introduce her board members that are here. And then we'll follow up with the action steps of the committee.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ellen. Thank you to all the members of the school committee. And I, I want to introduce the members of, of our Board of Advisors for Brookline Adult and Community Education. Arthur Conquest is with us this evening and he is the chairman of the, of the board. And we also have Peter Meyer and Steve von Lichtenberg who have joined us live. The other members of our advisory committee are participating, but just not on the panel this evening. So I'm sure that they are, are tuning in. And I, I promised Arthur I would yield a few moments of my time with you over to him. So he has a few comments that he'd like to share. And also wanted to acknowledge Jennifer Monopoly on the school committee who is our liaison. So she's been putting in quite a few large numbers of hours trying to help us and, and guide us through. Unfortunately, what we're feeling right now is, is a, is a crisis. And that's why I'm, I'm coming to you this evening, as Mary Ellen mentioned, with the need for two requests in particular of you. Just to kind of give you a, a very brief synopsis of, of what brought us here. Most certainly, the pandemic of 2020 is one of the reasons that base finds itself in, in this crisis that we're in. In fiscal year 20, the program experienced significant revenue loss due to the necessity to abruptly cancel over 450 classes, which was a really tough thing to do. We quickly rallied and started offering classes online. But our revenue stream just hasn't been as strong with the online classes. So we saw, you know, for fiscal year 20, that we brought in about $713,000 dollars in revenues versus the projected amount, which was over a million. It would have been $1.5 million. So we started off the year with, you know, dealing with the pandemic. And then when you, when you combined that with, you know, what I, I call sort of like, you know, the perfect storm here of, you know, giving back to the, the district to cover some of the expenses that the district has incurred as a result of our running our programs and assessment that we paid back in, I believe it was November of last year of about $195,000. And then in 2018, there was a loan that was taken out against base funds that we, you know, hoping that through this audit, we'll find out whether or not those funds have actually been returned to the program. But when you take all those three things together and, and you, you add them up, that's well over, you know, a million dollar hit to our program. We are a self-sustaining program. We've been in operation since the 1800s and, and in Brookline, which is a source of pride for us. We provide services and educational opportunities to children, youth, adults, the elderly. We, we really, you know, make an impact on the people that we serve. Our staff is small. We only have six people right now on board. Half the staff has been working with us for over 20 years. So they've put a lot of their, their lives into this program. And we hire, on average, each year. And we hire, on average, each year, the number of instructors range, you know, from 400, 500 a year of people throughout the metro Boston area, many of whom live in Brookline, also teach in our program. So we've had recently a little bit of outreach to them and received some great feedback and very supportive comments and stories about what the program has meant to them, and I believe that they've shared some of that information, you know, with you. But we really, we've been a good partner to the, to the district, and I know that the district recognizes that. You know, in times of need, when, when the district needed, say, a new kiln, you know, because it broke down in the UAB building, you know, we were able to provide a replacement for it. We've done wiring and computer labs. We've given a lot back, and I feel like, you know, we're asking for a little bit in return at this point, and some good faith that, you know, we're going to bring things back to the levels that we had in the past. So with that being said, I do have some slides I can share. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that people might have along the way. It is a lot of information. The vote that I'm asking for this evening, as Mary Ellen alluded to, is two found. One is for an audit, and the other is for funding for the, keeping the program solvent through the end of this fiscal year. And it's it's, it's been kind of, you know, a rocky period, but I really am very proud of the work that we've done and the amount of money that we've been able to continue to bring in. When you talk to people in the community who are running small businesses, it's tough right now, and, and we've continued to bring in revenues. We're just not able to provide the classes in person. And I feel very certain that if we're able to return after this pandemic has passed us by to in-person classes, we will very quickly be able to return to, you know, the, the kind of revenues, the 800,000 and plus revenues that, that we would, on average, take in each year. I'm sorry, I saw Mary Ellen's screen light up. I thought you were going to say something. No, okay. All right, well, let me go ahead and share my screen then. I won't go through each and every single one of these slides. We'd be here all night long. I've provided this information to you, along with a summary document as well. But these, this is the, the fund balance on December the first was around $100,000. It's probably up to about $108,000 based on our most recent deposit. But our revenue, the total projected revenue for the year is fairly low. It's $124,000. So, you know, we are running a deficit. And again, the, you know, the perfect storm is in these numbers here of the lost revenues of close to a half a million dollars. The assessments and a loan transfer that, you know, really seem to, from, from what I'm able to tell, has, has really hurt us. There was a audit that was done, I think Mary Ellen might be able to speak more to this, with Ruth and Donna in her office, where they went through and they took a look historically at what, what the revenues versus expenses were, irregardless of what the starting fund balance was for the year. And that's when they discovered that the program had been operating potentially at a deficit, when we thought in reality, we were actually, you know, making a considerable amount of money. So on slides seven, eight, and nine, which is in your packets as well as on the screen, it's, you can see those. Let me see if I go to presentation mode here, if it's easier for you to see those numbers. So you could see for fiscal year 2021 is on the column to the far right, but this takes into account our tuition, any refunds of tuition, our total program revenue. So you could see it dropping each year down to where it's a significantly lower number for fiscal year 2021. And then when you go down to the final, you know, balance of what our net income and our net loss is, it, it looks as if we were operating at a net loss for many years when we didn't realize that. And that's one of the reasons that we are asking an audit be done. It's been brought to my attention that the way that Munis has been set up, their expense versus the revenues were not, each side of the ledger was not necessarily talking to each other unless you ran very specific reports. And my understanding is that has been changed and corrected so that now funds cannot be spent against projected revenues, but only against actual revenues. So we won't run into this issue again. And again, you know, I think that the accounting, having an audit come in will help us determine what processes and procedures are needed to make sure that, you know, we continue to operate on the plus side.
So I just want to support and reinforce the need and review of the accounting practices, because I believe that if the district and the town had been practicing, what I guess I've always had in other districts, which is you can't spend revolving funds, funds, money with, against projected revenue. You can only spend against actual and real revenue. You know, I'd like to make sure that the town's practices and accounting practices are reviewed so that we don't have adult community ed in this case. And I think we've had an initial internal, I've had an initial internal conversation with regards to the FY18 deficit. I'll just remind the committee is that the FY, we had a deficit in FY18. We had proposed funding that through a loan through Adult and Community Ed that had been a practice, that had been moving and sort of trading money back and forth between revolving funds had been a practice within Brookline. Arthur Conquest appropriately made an objection to that on behalf of the base board, and it was that journal entry was, was supposed to have been, was reversed. Looks like it was reversed, but it's not showing up in the reports for Adult and Community Ed, which is problematic, which is why we want a, an addition, different auditing firm to review the practices, the accounting practices and ledger practices. Town meeting of the fall of November 2018, we reduced the school department's operating budget and gave up our Chapter 70 increase to pay for that FY18 deficit. So we want to make sure that the ledgers are correct, that the accounting procedures are correct. I believe the correction we made for this year, which is showing only the actual revenue and the, having the program only be able to expend that actual revenue, that corrects one major error. This is common practice, and we're sort of also running into this with some of our other revolving funds, and may have been causing some of our other revolving fund issues in the past. So I do want to say that I want to support this, the, the audit piece of this. It will be extremely helpful to me, very helpful to Michelle. And I think there are other pieces and components of the Adult and Community Ed program that Michelle has inherited, where she has an application that needs to be reconciled to Munis and some, you know, some good best practice process and procedures and some training for staff around reconciling revenue and what, how do we account, how does she account for credits that people don't take a refund but keep a course credit? And so where do we, how do we account for that to make sure that we don't spend those funds? We have that problem. We have that in food service where we deduct. Every year, we have to hold back from our fund balance. The money we have on account in school lunch accounts is very similar. So how we, what's our best practice for doing that? So I want to make sure the committee knows, and the board members that are here know that I'm in full support of the review and the audit for whatever, whatever it shows, and look forward to working with the, the board on the scope and what that scope of that review and audit should be. So that we would, and ideally, we, I would like to see that we get that done quickly, and certainly by the end of February, because I think we do have a deficit in that program, and so we need to make sure we can manage that through June. And if there's some best practices we can start putting in place and training, we can put in place that mitigate the total deficit at the end of the year. That would be very helpful to Michelle and her team.
Andy has a question.
Yes, from Mary Ellen. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what you were saying earlier about the $480,000 loan from 2018. What I understood you to be saying was that PSB has a record that we repaid that money, but that, but that money was never apparently credited to base after it was repaid.
It's the way the reports run. So in the ledgers, you can actually see it going back into the fund, but the way the reports run, it, it doesn't appear that. So if you don't, if it doesn't appear so. And that's part of training. At some point, we'll be going through all of this with the finance subcommittee. We'll get into the nitty gritty of that with the finance subcommittee. So the conversation that I had internally is that those funds were actually done. It's, so in, in, so Brookline uses a period 13 for doing year-end adjustments and changes. Most communities keep the period 12, the July, June period open. You can have a new fiscal year start. I'm just talking accounting language. So part of it, it's an accounting practice that is kind of messing up the reporting. So if you don't run, if your department heads don't run the right reports or the right summary reports, they're going to get misinformation and both on revenue expenditure side, depending on what that year-end closing month looks like. So we are that piece we need to resolve and make sure that, what the reports are, show the reports, make sure that those reports are final. Have a third party review and confirm. Confirm all the funds that are supposed to be there.
If I could follow up on that. So like, once, once the audit is done, like, how confident can we be that that money will be found and can then immediately be credited to base? Since we're confident that
So the town's position is that the money is already in base. The money was already given to base. What is the piece that is, the, the next piece of that is, the reporting after that is the fact, the, the next piece was the reporting out on and allowed to expend on projected revenue. When, so for example, on the ledger, we have a projected revenue amount. And so when you have a projected revenue amount in your budget column, and you have your, in your expenses, that bounces to zero. But when you have, but in Munis, when you have a budgeted revenue, it allows you to spend against that budgeted revenue. So we changed that this year, and nobody adjusted that revenue when they knew they weren't going to meet that revenue. And there was no adjustment in that period 13 to reduce that revenue. So it gave a false, when you ran reports, it would give a false balance. When the town has a, the town has a separate fund balance report, which is a little challenging to read, the balance, they stand by the balance that that report shows. And that's not a report that Michelle or Claudia would ever have seen to know that that was off. And this is, you know, so it's a little, it's, it's a little more than ironic that one of the positions I'd asked for when I started in 2015 was a special revenue funds manager position, because these things are pretty, can get pretty complicated, grants can be, and, you know, I'm dealing with, we're dealing with this situation with base. So that position was never filled and was actually converted to a payroll position, just so you know where that went. But Helen, you had a question?
Yes, I guess I'm confused. Michelle, did you get the 400,000 into your budget?
I have not been able to find it.
So that's where the problem is. That's 600,000.
But that's why we're asking, but that's why we're asking for the audit.
I get it. No, no, I just wanted to understand what
No one knows. At this point, Helen, no one knows.
I get it. And the 600,000 deficit that you had in that year in, the 400,000
No, no. So the report that she has where we looked at, okay, so we said, you know what? If, without the fund balance, without any prior year fund balance whatsoever, to try to figure out whether the current fund balance was in the realm of, of appropriateness. We just, we looked at, here's all the revenue that was collected for that year. Here's all the expenses for that year. So did the program run at a profit or loss that year?
Yeah, I get that. That's what you showed, Michelle.
That's what we were working
You, you gave us a number of years with your deficits. In that deficit of 600,000, that, you never showed the increase of 400,000 in your revenues at any point.
No, no, so that 400,000 should have been a part of fund balance. That should have been part of a prior year balance that carried over. That report that she showed you.
Accounting, it's nowhere to be found.
It's, well, but no fund balances on that report.
No, no. I'm not, but there must have been an income into into the fund somewhere. You have to
There are two things we're talking about. There are two things we're talking about, two findings, we, two things we're talking about. One is, we didn't, the, what Michelle showed you was a report that said, on a year-to-year basis, not carrying over any deficits or any, any balances, was base profitable. Did base break even? What that report shows you, because, is that, from, there was only one year since 16 that base actually had a balance at the end of the year. There's been an assumption that base has been profitable every year. So that report shows you on those years, those program years, base was not profitable. Nobody ever actually looked at base that way. So that's one, that's one piece of information. Separate piece is that the fund balance, which I'm just going to say, we've discussed it prior meetings, looked like it was about a million dollars, right? That's the second piece. That fund balance of a million dollars should have carried, you know, through those years. Did it carry through those years? But the reports that the board and the director were using was not showing that their fund balance was being tapped over those years. And then we have this issue of accounting in period 13, and maybe reports not being run through period 13 and information not being complete for the board. And, and that's to Arthur's point, and, and the request of the board, is really having a third person, another audit firm, look at the accounting practices and the reporting to make sure that, you know, everything is in order from an accounting and transaction standpoint, and then providing some education and tools around what reporting should go to the board and what reporting should Michelle be looking at to make sure that she knows her program that she knows her program year is running in balance. And she's not, and they, the fund balance they started with is going to be the fund balance they end with at a minimum. Or are they using fund balance? Or do they have to use fund balance for the, supporting the year they're in? Is that helpful?
Can, can I?
It's confusing.
Jennifer, you had your, your hand up. I know that. So go ahead.
Thank you, Arthur. I can, I can wait if you.
No, 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 go, go ahead, go ahead. I'm the perfect gentleman.
Thank you, Arthur. At first, I really want to thank Michelle McGroom for, and her team for all of her hard work and their hard work. And she's been analyzing, evaluating, planning, brainstorming, fundraising. A, a ton of work, hard work and determination. For how to support base and how to manage the financial health of base. And so I really just want to thank her for, and the team of people, the staff that she's working with. Just a huge amount of hours and work and, and extra effort. So just a huge thank you to them for, for the hard work on this. And secondly, just to make a statement that I fully support and an independent audit that we need to sort of just, we, we just need to make. We need to clarify that things are going to continue in the future to be done. And then in the way that they need to be done, reports are run the way that they need to be done. And, and Mary Ellen can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. My understanding as a non accountant person, Helen, is that there are sort of like several buckets of, of things that need to be addressed. One is that. My, my understanding, this is very loose, Mary Ellen, this is not, this is my understanding. There was. Due to the way that MUNIS reports were run, right? So the information that was being provided did not really allow for an analysis of revenues and expenses to really understand what the fund balance was. So there was this, we, we have been, as Mary Ellen mentioned. Understood that there was like a million dollars in that revolving fund and that it was a very healthy revolving fund. But it, it seems that that is not the case at this time. And so then there's this amount that we need to identify that has been returned. I think that's a separate issue, this large chunk of money that was gone. And then need to make sure that it's came back and that we can find that accounting. And so I think it will really help. Base and the board and the school district and the town, if we can really just clarify all of these pieces. And then there's the, the piece that we really haven't spent a lot of time on, which is the loss of revenue due to COVID. Which, you know, we're, a lot of people are facing, a lot of. Community groups are facing, we're, you know, we, we are having issues with. And so that has been, I think, a piece that's really brought this all to light. And, and Michelle has been with, Michelle, if you could refresh us on your, your start date. You know, she's sort of inherited a lot of this. And, and so that's why I really thank her for, for doing a lot of this work and trying to really understand her program and, and really make sure that it's a healthy program. And, and, you know, Michelle mentioned that base is a longstanding community program. And it's, if I'm not mistaken, the oldest adult and community ed program. Not only in the state, but mainly at all.
In the country, in the country.
In the country. And so, you know, I really wanna, I want to make sure that we do what we need to do to keep this program and get it and help it, support it to get it back on. There's a, there is a, a number of people I've heard speak at different other meetings in base and in finance and talking with people that if we can. If they can start running their in-person programming or when they can, that that, there are certain programs that they run that are much more profitable due to the nature of the programs. And if they could start running those programs, that would be very financially beneficial. They also run a number of our programs for us, like the music extension program, smarts. The, the other programs that are affiliated that directly benefit the students of Brookline. And so that's sort of my piece for right now. Thank you, Arthur, for letting me.
You're welcome. Just for some of you who don't know me, Arthur Conquest. Have lived in Brookline since 82. You know, maybe I've been on the board for 35 years. My commitment to the board. My commitment. To this community is the community side of the adult and community ed program. And I have seen over the years. Some incredible. Programs come through Basie. And I, I'm going to write you a note. Rather than presented here to save time. But I'm going to write you a note just about. Some of the, the, the programs that are now in the school. Like the Urban Scholars Program, like Project Achieve. Okay, the Martin Luther King yearly celebration all started. In the adult and community ed program. I, I, I'm positive, I'll bet my life. That once the schools start, open back up again full time. You'll see in a matter of three months that we'll be back on our feet. And. Whatever problems we're going through now will evaporate. I've seen it happen. It happened 10 years ago. When Bill Lupini first came aboard. And he hired. Someone who didn't know what she was doing. And there was a similar financial problem. We hired Claudia and in no time. We were back in, in business. So I, I have supreme confidence in the community. The, the program has shifted a little over the last 10 years. It's almost now 50% adults, 50% children in the community. But it's still offering services to the community and valuable services. You know, just our. Winter Christmas Vacation Spring Program is an enormous support to this community. So. I, I don't. I, I have no hesitation to say. Support us for the eight months or whatever it is, or nine months that we have left in this school year. And hopefully we'll then be able to uncover this. This deficit problem or this. Financial problem that we have and we'll, we'll be running smooth again. Just trust me on that if you can. Thank you very much. Okay? And, and I just. The, the audit will, I'm positive. Back me up on this. Okay? We've never, in the 200 some odd years in this program, even the 40 years that I've been associated with this program. We've always lent the school system money. And I'll answer any question that anybody has. Going back to Jim Walsh, going back to Lupini, where we were supporting the schools. Plus, how much rent do we pay? $175,000 a year? It started at 125 and it moved up to 175. But. That's a, a pretty healthy. No one in that, in the town pays that kind of rent for, for space. So up until last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arthur, and thank you for all your years of service on the board. My goodness, that's a long time. I appreciate it. Do we have a motion so then we can ask questions or comments on that? Jennifer?
I don't have the official wording of the motion, but I would make a motion. Apply me with language. Oh. I'm sorry.
What, what, Steve?
I would like to make a comment if I can.
Sure. Can Jennifer do the motion and then we'll have time for comments?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks. I, I would make a motion to, I'm not sure, what do we need a motion for? Is it just specifically for the audit to support an audit or Mary? Thank you, Mary Ellen. Help me with language.
Um, I would, so. I'm going to give you a verbal motion with a blank in it because the committee needs to decide, needs to decide how to fill in the blank. Okay? So the motion is that the school committee authorizes. The funding of the adult and community education deficit and audit as requested up to blank. So that would be, so what Michelle gave you for a dollar amount. Would, I've rounded up to the nearest 100,000. So it's whatever the amount is for the. For the maintaining the full staff right now. She has two proposals there in her slide. I don't know if she can put that, put that up. And, or the one with a scaled back version rounded up to 200,000. The audit should be between, potentially between five and 10. But I would like a little bit more of a buffer on Michelle's estimates and numbers and just activity around base. To sort of manage, you know, just have a little bit extra in case we've miscalculated a payroll here and there.
Mary Ellen, do you have an estimate on the audit cost?
Yeah, it should be five to 10,000. I'm not quite sure exactly what that would be, but it shouldn't be much more than that.
Okay, Suzanne, if it's possible, I think perhaps we may want to split it into two motions. We could. I, I just think because there's a little discussion, I think that we'll need between these two options. And so what I, what I'm very clearly prepared to do is make a motion that we authorize an audit. Up to $10,000. And so I would make a motion for that.
Okay, we can do that. Do we have, I know Mariah, I see your hand, just a second. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Dimitri. So we have on the floor a motion to authorize funding for. Audit for base up to, how much money? 10,000? Is that what?
That's Mary Ellen's estimate.
Okay, up to 10,000. Okay.
No, I think Mary Ellen said that she needed something, a buffer, so a little bit more than 10.
No, the buffer is related to Michelle's estimates.
Okay.
So up to 10,000. Mariah, did you have a comment? I know finances has made a recommendation around this finance subcommittee.
Well, I was going to do that, but I don't know if you wanted to take Steve, because Steve had asked to talk.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's what you were going to talk about.
That is what I was going to talk about was the discussion of finance. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So Steve, go ahead and then we'll have Mariah.
I, I would just like to make some general comments to.
Michelle, can you take down the screen?
School committee. Regarding the adult education program.
Thank you.
We just went over enrollment figures in the public schools. And there was something like, what, 78, 6,800 students. Adult Ed traditionally has 2,500 separate individuals enrolling in programs. This year it's probably closer to 800 enrolling. But in any case, and in some years, it, it was twice the enrollment of the Brookline Public Schools. Now, the public schools have as their main purpose, the, the education of young children. The three Rs and the other things they need to become members of society. And adult ed picks up where that leaves off. Adult ed picks up with adults who want to learn enhancements like basket weaving and mattress stuffing and, and arts. And some adults who need things like English as a second language or to learn a foreign language in order to do their jobs. Or for a long time, they were taking computer courses in adult ed that were very important to their abilities to make money. And finally, I don't envy you your task. But if you were to dismantle adult ed. You would find that it would be extremely difficult to rebuild. You, that, it's been my experience as an accountant that when a business takes a hiatus or closes. That you can't put the pieces back together without a tremendous amount of work. So these are the quandaries that I see you facing in your decision making. And I hope that you will find that adult ed is a part of the Brookline school systems. And it deserves the attention that you give to the, the other learning parts of your school system. That's all I really wanted to say to you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Steve. That's helpful. Mariah, do you want to weigh in on the finance subcommittee? Cause I know you did some deliberation on this.
Sure, we met, gosh, time, shh, sorry, three-year-old singing. We met a couple of weeks ago and I was very, it was very helpful to talk to Michelle and to the board members, including Arthur and Steve about what was going on. And we had, we covered a lot of this ground. We, we, we did discuss the. For the audit and much of what we talked about tonight. We, at that meeting, we looked at several options for the different levels of funding for the continuity of base, which again, everyone agreed was very important to, to have that in place. And. And, and the two options that are presented on the slide that Michelle had given. One is for the full sort of continuity and one is for a slightly reduced continuity. I won't say slightly, but reduced continuity. Thanks, Michelle. I'll just wait for that to come up really quickly. There we go. And, and if you see it, essentially, the second option, which was the one that the finance subcommittee voted for unanimously, as I recall. I don't have the vote right in front of me. But essentially was to take, take some of the staff part-time. Some of the staff remain full-time, some of the staff go part-time. But, but essentially all of the staff continue in, in some, at some level of effort. So that is the, the second, the second option is the one that the finance subcommittee voted for.
Is that essentially 200,000 or is that?
It's, yeah, 186.
Okay, so was that, was that the amount, 186?
Right, but that, it's just below.
Yeah.
186, 626?
It's sort of covered up on the screen right now by the bar, but yes, 186 and change.
Okay. Okay, so I think we have one motion on the floor, which is for the audit. And then let's go to the second motion. So let's, if, if there's no other questions or comment, we will vote just on the audit now. If I could have the screen back, that would be helpful. Michelle?
Sure.
Thanks. I, I know we're making you go back and forth.
That's fine, all right. It's, that's fine.
Suzanne, do you want me to make a motion for the second amount? Or do you want to keep talking about it? Cause I could make that motion if you wanted.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Vote. Okay, so we can vote on one and then the other.
Mariah?
Yes.
Could you? Stake us another $5,000?
I think that's what Mary Ellen had been suggesting, if I understood correctly, right, Mary Ellen? Was a little bit of a buffer?
So, so for, for me, in, if the second, that's why I rounded 186 to 200,000. Is that it gave a buffer, not only for Michelle, but also gave for a buffer for the audit. But we've now split it, so.
I'd actually prefer to return to the, to Mary Ellen's approach. But.
It comes out of the same pocket.
Yeah.
The same, so it's not, you know, we're not, it comes out of the operating budget and a single account.
Yes, this one.
Well, I think we have a motion, Suzanne. Yeah, wait, wait. I just, I think we have a motion we probably should vote on and then we can do the second motion. And it comes out of the same pocket. That's fine.
But the point is that what we, what we would say is different. Because I would either say 186,000 and change, or to Arthur's point and Mary Ellen's point, 190,000.
Plus the audit, which is 200.
But, but again, if the audit came in at less than 10,000.
Yeah.
Jennifer split it out, it caps what base can access at 190. Whereas if the audit came in slightly less, it would give base slightly more wiggle room. So by splitting it, we've actually limited the flexibility. So we might, I'm just proposing, we might roll it back together.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I, that's fine with me. Andy, I know you have your hand up.
You need a friendly amendment accepted by Jennifer to change the amount.
Yeah, but.
Okay, so who does the friendly amendment? Not you, Arthur.
I know, but I wanted to say something. No, 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 I, I know that, but I, I wanted to say, I, I, if I could.
Okay, okay, Arthur. Okay, okay, Arthur.
I, I was speaking with a friend of mine today, who's a, he's a professor of the dollars at Northeastern. And I mentioned to him what we were, what we had, what we were proposing for an audit in the 15 to 20,000 dollar range. And he said that because of this time of year, for some odd reason, trying to find an auditor who's going to accept, a, a decent auditor, who's going to accept those kinds of figures are going to be more than difficult. So, I mean, I, I don't want to have to put us and if we, if we get someone, you know, at a low cost, we return the money. But if we start out behind the eight ball, then, and he told me some other things that I don't have to mention now, but I want us to do this thing. I, I want us to complete this so that it's right, okay, and that we don't find ourselves behind the eight ball in a month and a half from now.
Okay, sounds good. Andy, I think you wanted to say something, or no?
Yes, I did have a question. So, and then the documents we were given, one of the requests or suggested actions by the school committee is to waive the room assessment. That was supposed to be paid in November, and that is like 195,480 something dollars, right, which is very close to the amounts we're talking about for this. What is the relation of that suggestion to this thing?
That's another, that's.
Michelle, I believe you did not include the assessment for this year in your numbers, because we talked with the capital subcommittee, and we're actually on your future, on a future agenda, you'll be having a vote for waiving the assessments for not only Adult and Community Ed, but also the extended day programs.
So we'll be doing that in, in capital subcommittee, not here.
Kind of gone through capital subcommittee, but it needs to come to school committee for, for a vote. We just haven't gotten it on your docket yet.
Okay, but, but waiving that would not provide the 186.
No, she's already taken it out. She didn't include it.
Okay, so, so, all right.
Yeah, the 195 was taken out back a year ago, and then we were due another 180,000 plus for this November, and it wasn't collected because we didn't have it to give, and because we were asking for some relief. So that, that'll happen later, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I'm not a parliamentarian, so I don't know if this is an appropriate protocol, but can I withdraw my motion to make a new motion? Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my first motion, and I'm going to make a due motion. And the motion is that we approve, I think if I understood the number correctly, 200,000, which would include the monies that base would need to get to the end of the fiscal year, and include monies for a third-party audit. That is my motion. If I, I believe that I understand the language of that. If you need to make it more technical, please jump in, but that's the motion on the floor.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second again.
Okay. Um. I, I guess my only question might be, Mary Ellen, just to reassure us that we have the money to give to them.
We don't. We have a deficit, so it makes our deficit from five in my 500, this month's report you'll, you'll get, it's going to finance subcommittee next week. It brings our deficit up to 715,000. So that doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. I, I mean, because, you know. But I, I do want to take the opportunity is that you're now witnessing sort of how I've had to make things work out to balance the budget. And it's not pretty. It's kind of ugly. And sometimes, like, you know, things don't settle out the way they need to, and don't say, stay settled out. So, which is why I'm very much, you know, in support of the, of the audit being done, because I want to make sure that we don't have any other unravelings for 19's deficit that I had to solve and 20's deficit that I had to solve. Because we're dealing with accounting practices that you know, are, for me, are of concern and are not the standards that I've had, or of the practice that I've had in four other MUNIS communities.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
One other piece, there are a number of other recommendations that I, I do not believe that we're taking up for discussion this evening, but that are on, in Michelle's documents that she has also supplied to us, and some of those include fundraising efforts and other ways to help us close this deficit over time, that will take time over the remainder of this fiscal year to possibly be part of that. And, and some of that, I don't know if those need school committee votes, and whether or not we'll take those up in various other subcommittees or finance, or at full school committee, but I think that base has been trying to brainstorm some other ways to, to help us in this work. I don't think that it's going to be the kind of money that's going to solve this problem, but I, I hope that there'll be continued efforts to help us with this, the financial health of the revolving fund.
Michelle?
I, I'm glad that Jennifer mentioned that, because I didn't want people to feel like we're coming to you without having tried to do some things within our own control to try to, to remedy the situation. So we've, we've caught, cut substantially costs, we've reduced staff. We've increased some of the tuition in areas that we were able to in order to stay competitive with other community ed programs. We did a fall fundraising where we had the governor and other noted people come and speak. We've done a lot of things. We're, we're looking into doing more to try to, to help, you know, this, this situation. And that the struggle that I have, I, and I fully understand that we're, we have a deficit that the district is operating in. On top of the, the issue that base is bringing to, to you right now, is, you know, being able to do all the fundraising and continue to offer the same level of high-quality programming to all of the people in the community. You know, with, with part-time staff, because that's what this option of the $200,000 would, would be able to provide us with. It would be one full-time program coordinator and two part-time program coordinators. We're going to try to sustain what we've been doing, but I'm not sure how realistic that is on top of everything else. So the, the, you know, the, these you know, the funds would, would, would be helpful, and we're very appreciative of any efforts that the school committee could, could offer in that area. But, you know, just the, the reality of it is that, you know, that there, we really, we really need everybody there full-time. We've already taken the cuts that we needed to operate at bare bones. We are operating at bare bones now. So I just wanted to advocate for my staff for full-time, if, if we were able to keep it. It's not that much significantly more than the, doing the part-time. But I, I would appreciate, you know, even, even if it's the 186 or the 200, you know, just know that it is appreciated. I'm, I just feel obligated to, to advocate for the first option if possible before there's a vote taken.
Okay.
But I'm grateful either way.
Yeah, thank you. I think we have the motion on the floor. We should vote unless anybody else needs to jump in.
Yeah, I do have a clarity, because I, I mean, so just to Michelle's point, I am in favor of the first option. So I just want to be clear, Jennifer, that although we've set it a number, we are on the record that we prefer the first option.
Yeah, Jennifer. Yeah, I, I also prefer the first option, but I believe the recommendation from finance subcommittee is, is that, I mean, I suppose I could make a motion for the larger amount, and we could see if it passes.
You can move to amend.
Okay, so.
Funny that you're amending your own motion, though.
This is my third one.
Who seconded, the people who made and seconded the motion don't actually want the motion.
I do, what, what I want and what I, I wonder is if it's, if it's possible, we are facing a deficit, and this is part of the discussion, I guess, is we are facing a huge deficit, and so I'm trying to, I want to, I want to support base, and I understand that we are facing a, a very difficult financial situation. And so my heart says one thing, and my, then the money says another, and I don't really know how we, that, that's, you know, I look forward to hearing from other people if people feel differently, I guess.
I think that's the, I think that's the conversation to have, right? We are facing a deficit in terms of the crisis of COVID, so that's why I think we should put the motion to a vote, because I think this is another program that's a casualty of the COVID crisis, on top, of course, of the accounting issue. But we are in this moment big, because of the pandemic. So that ought to be the conversation.
So Dimitri, you think you should, that my, your thinking is that if, to offer the motion at the full-time amount and then have discussion and vote on that?
That's right.
Michelle, what's the number?
The number for full-time would be 296,500 versus 186,626.
Plus the, plus the audit.
Plus the audit.
Round up.
Plus the audit. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, plus a buffer, but, but round up.
It's about 310.
Yeah, 310.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I would prefer that we vote a motion that's on the floor now.
Can I, let me just add to the information. So we have not, school committee has not rescinded it or adjusted their reserve fund transfer request to advisory yet from a million dollars. They, Mike Sandman does know that, and Cliff Brown do know that the school committee is wrestling with this issue. So we, you know, that is another tool in the tool chest I have, or you have at this point for balancing that budget. And I think I think the assumption being that Michelle is going to be continuing to do fundraising and implementing her other suggestions, we typically would not get that reserve fund until June, late June. So while I work on the operating budget and weeding that down, and Michelle works her, works on her piece. You know, that's, that's the next check-in that we have to do after finance subcommittee next week is with advisory around how much of that reserve fund ask that we ha- have. Can we adjust downwards or, or not? And or would they be removing it, and we're on our own? But it's, so I just want to make sure people know or have that in, and maybe other people already remember that, and that's what's in their head. But that was a million-dollar placeholder.
Andy?
Yeah, could I ask the finance subcommittee, and when you considered this in subcommittee, what, what considerations caused you to recommend the lower figure?
Do you want me to answer, Suzanne?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, I think it's the issue, it's what we're talking about, which is this, this trade-off of if we were in a financially sustainable position ourselves, we could be over, you know, in the overall budget, we could be thinking about this differently, but the budget is under intense pressure. It's already in a deficit. And, and we don't know what other costs were, were partway through the year. We don't know what other costs are going to come around, and, and we need to make sure that we are we are trying to, we are trying to do right by base and do right by the entire school system. I think that was the balance we were trying to strike.
Helen?
So, I, I have a question that I'm not clear about. You're saying your enrollment is down substantially, and we know that. By having a full complement, as opposed to going to halftime, what are the people going to be? You know, is there the work for full-time people?
I'm glad you asked that, because you would think, you know, on paper, that those numbers would translate into that. Honestly, the staff is as busy now as they were before, because we're, we continue to plan. We, we don't have a lot of data to go on as to what courses people are willing to take right now. So every, every session that we're planning, we're banking on our best efforts as to what classes are people able to take right now, given the fact that they're home with their children, they might not get the quiet time that they would have, or, you know, to bring a babysitter in, they can't do that anymore. You know, some of the classes that were, you know, our stand, standard classes that we always had high enrollments in aren't getting the kind of traction that they used to get, but we're still getting enough in those classes that it's still worth it to, to offer it. We're just not making as much money from it. So, you know.
But you're not losing money on those classes?
No, no, we're not losing money. We're, we're not, we won't, I won't allow a class to run at a deficit. If the class isn't going to break even, we can't run it, and we have to refund the money of the students that have enrolled in it. So we're constantly looking at that. We do our very best to project, you know, the, out, what, what we believe we're going to have for enrollments. But during this pandemic, it's, it's just been, there's, it's just been so uncertain. But we're always planning. So right now, we just, we're starting our winter session next week. And we're already gearing up for our spring programming, which includes the children's programs. We're still running the music extension program on top of that for 325 kids, I believe. They are playing instruments for the district. You know, we're, we're going to be, we started doing, we're going to have a March Madness session, which is going to be a big fundraising week for us. We're planning already for our summer programs and hiring. So there's a lot of work that happens upfront for work that isn't going to be seen, or enrollments and revenues that won't be seen until the future. So it has, it honestly has stayed incredibly busy. We haven't had any downtime whatsoever since this pandemic started. It's just been crazy.
Just from my own knowledge, if people were to go to halftime, are they eligible for unemployment for that other half?
Yes. No? I thought that's one of the reasons that we went to.
No, that we, the.
Oh, that was insurance.
It has the benefits.
The benefits, I know they key.
Yeah. Yeah, not to my knowledge. I don't believe that, that, that they can. They would, they would sustain those.
They can certainly apply. The rules are changing all the time, so we certainly would encourage them to apply.
Okay, Jennifer, you have something to say, but I would really, we need to move this along. I mean, that's, this is important, I understand, but I, you know, we, we need to have a vote of some kind. So Jennifer?
No, no, I, I don't have any more statements. I think it is, I think we're at where we're at. I, I'm going to amend mine. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the, I'm gonna put the motion on the floor for the floor. Do you like that? I'm gonna put the motion on the floor. For, for 310,000, which includes, a maximum of 310, which includes the money for the fiscal year as well as the audit. And I do want to make sure that that language is in there, because I want to make sure that the audit happens. So that's the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, motion is seconded.
Can I propose an amendment?
Yeah, Mariah.
I amend to 200,000.
I'll second.
Yeah. So now how do we do this? Somebody help me.
You take the amendment first.
We have to take the amendment first. We have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, so we vote on the amendment.
Yes.
And if it, if it passes, then what happens?
It's, it's.
Then we vote again. Then we vote again. You vote the amendment, and then you vote again.
Okay.
The amendment is now the final language, and if the amendment fails, we vote the original language.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment, which is at 200,000, correct?
With the audit, right, Mariah?
That includes the audit. Okay, Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
Susan?
No.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
No.
And I vote yes. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and three nos. So now what do we do?
Now you voted again 200,000. We think, take the same vote.
Well, now we vote on it. So that was just to do the amendment.
It was to decide if we're doing 300 or 200, 201. Now we vote the 200 as the option.
Okay, so we're, we're doing it again. Okay. And this is, again, Helen?
I think there were four nos.
Yes, I think there were four nos, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was the fourth no?
David.
No, no. No, David was yes.
I for no, I have Jennifer, Susan, and Dimitri. Anybody else?
Okay, then I was wrong.
Okay, okay. I could have been wrong, but that's fine.
No, I was wrong. Sorry.
Okay, so now we're going to vote for the amended, which is 200,000, correct? Okay, so now we're going to vote for the amended, which is two hundred thousand, correct? Thank you to my town meeting members, you're coming through for me, I appreciate it. Okay, here we go, uh, we'll mix this up a little, uh, Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Uh, Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I can't figure out if I'm supposed to vote yes or no.
You're supposed to vote yes.
You vote yes, because you want them to have two hundred thousand, even if they don't get three hundred thousand.
Money, right, yes.
Okay, and Susan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so, uh, Base, thank you very much for your presentation, for all your good work.
If I could just say something for a moment. I would have loved to have been able to vote the full three ten, I think all of us would have loved to do that. But given the state that we're currently in, I don't know if some of you heard public comment or, of course, you're tuned in in general as to our current situation. We're running on a, on a deficit right now, or in a projected deficit for the year. We have a lot of competing needs, it's very difficult. It's important to try to maintain some degree of flexibility. Uh, we're cautiously optimistic that between the, uh, that there could be some other funding mechanisms that could help bridge the gap a bit further. So I'm glad we're able to help about two thirds of the way to what you need. And, uh, I'm confident we'll continue to make an effort to work with you to try to make it complete.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, David.
Uh, as we say, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you certainly are welcome to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. Not that we're not enjoyable, but, you know.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to do, uh, go back to number five, which is budget development. And there's a budget development guidelines and the calendar. And I think Jim, you and Mary Ellen are on with that. Whoops, Jimmy, you're mute?
Yep, it's, it has guidelines listed first, so shall we start with the guidelines?
Sure, well, whichever, whichever one you want.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and, uh, I don't know whether, uh, Mary Ellen, you have this and you want to share it on the screen, everybody has their copy in front of them. I don't know which is more efficient. Mary Ellen, are you there?
Yeah, what would, oops, sorry. What would the committee like?
Can you share it?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
It'll be hard to read, I think, on the screen, it'll be so.
I can blow it up, let's see what happens.
But if, just for clarification, are we voting on anything or this is just conversation and information?
I think eventually you will, these are draft, uh, guidelines, but, uh, uh, I, I, I think tonight, uh, is another opportunity to inform them. These include some of the comments from my last school committee meeting, uh, as well as, uh, some additions that Mary Ellen and I made, which we will go through. But, um, at, at some point we will vote these, these will be included in the budget book that goes out. So people will see what was guiding the, uh, the decision-making process. But you can see from, from the, the draft memo here that it acknowledges in the very first paragraph that the, the school committee, uh, by statute is responsible for the budget, for overseeing and approving the budget. So, um, it's, it's important that, uh, we have an understanding of, of, about what's the underpinning guidelines for, that's driving the budget. Therefore, um, we, we put this little memo together and I try to, uh, make it as, as direct and simple as possible so that we could, you know, really be actionable. But remember, and I'm going to say this a thousand times before this is over, in the end, the school committee, uh, is going to vote for this budget and the school, this will be the school committee's budget. My responsibility as superintendent is to bring forth a budget that, uh, we believe meets the needs of the district. And, uh, the school committee has an obligation to approve a budget that you believe meets the needs of, of the district. Uh, and then, of course, there may be, uh, a gap between what we want for a budget and what we can support for a budget. And then the school committee will be giving some direction on closing that gap, I'm anticipating a gap. Um, and when we get to the place on the twenty-first where we will, will show what the, uh, uh, budget requests will be and what we think the resources are going to be, then we can talk about, well, how are we going to close that gap? Are we going to close the gap? Because that, that's a question as well. Um, but for tonight's discussion, uh, we're looking at, uh, the budget guidelines that is, that, that then you give to me to say, as you develop this budget, be, uh, th- these are the, the, the values, these are the guidelines we want you to consider when you develop the budget. So let's read through them and there are other things you may want to add, you may want to delete, you may want to change. Uh, this is, uh, this is a time to do that so that I can walk away with the, with the clear understanding of the priorities. So Mary Ellen, can you scroll up a little, please? Because, you know, w- we have the, 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 uh, down just a little bit. I just wanted to just make sure that we included the, uh, Brookline has, uh, the, the four, district goals that have been in place that actually ex- uh, e- expire. And, uh, you'll see that in the guidelines, that they are in the assumptions that we're building in, uh, um, money for a strategic planning process for next year. I think that's critical for the district, we'll see. But we are keeping in mind students, uh, student achieving, uh, and invested, students who are invested in learning, students prepared for change and challenges, this year doesn't get them there, I don't think anything will. Um, and educators' growth professionally, professional development, continuous growth, that you add vibrancy to the system. So let, so let's go, uh, through, if you haven't, uh, uh, read them, I'm just going to read them and then we can have a discussion. Want to build a budget that includes, uh, unallocated reserve funds. Uh, and, uh, that's been in the budget assumptions over the last couple of years. That's going to be important for the unanticipated, uh, costs that are going to arise, uh, in a whole bunch of different areas. Base the budget on, here we go now, this is, this is different from what we were talking about before. Base the budget on pre-pandemic projected enrollments for grades one, K and one, talked about that this evening. Uh, enrollment projections for all other grades will roll forward, uh, be the cohort survival model. So we'll, so we'll use the numbers that we have, not the projected numbers from the firm that was brought in. We're going to adhere to class size guidelines, we don't have the class size guidelines per se, but we have a historical perspective on what the class size guidelines are. And we probably should have listed them here, Mary Ellen, we should, we should actually, uh, put in parentheses what those guidelines are so that the, the committee knows that. All right, so here's another one, we're going to build this budget with an assumption that we're going to return to normal school programming and operations next year. We will not have a remote learning academy, uh, in our, um, in our budget. We will not have, um, six foot distancing, we will return to normal programming. That's what the budget will do. Uh, meet the needs of the schools, of, of the Brookline School students receiving special education services. We want, we, we want to make certain that we're supporting that. Include funding for a new strategic planning process. That will be a year-long process, uh, that will be led by the administration and school committee next year. Uh, align the budget to support high-quality curriculum initiatives. I had initially, uh, talked about the math program, there was a math review and there's an implementation process underway, but I thought it'd be better if we just generalized it. So we support high-quality curriculum initiatives. Include sufficient funding to support the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Administration and Finance. Uh, we, we'll talk about these more in detail, but what that really means is the Office of Teaching and Learning was, uh, restructured this year, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's operating at an unsustainably lean number of people. And the Office of Administration and Finance is insufficiently staffed for the kinds of reporting, uh, and that, that needs to be done and budget tracking as well. So you'll hear more about that. Again, you, you have to decide whether to keep it in there. Returns identified positions, last year there were positions that were removed from the budget with the expectation they would be returned this year. Those include the ECS coordinator, health and wellness coordinator, and, and stipends, the stipends are for, uh, coaches and for, uh, those extra programs, activities. Meet all contractual obligations, including personnel, contracts, state and federal mandates, transportation requirements, and technology leases and licensing agreements. Uh, support district efforts regarding staff diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, ensure breadth of program, uh, of education to include visual and performing arts, physical education, and world language. Um, support district efforts regarding, oh, I'm sorry about that. Uh, support robust and aligned professional development for district educators. And, and a, a couple others that came out of our discussion last time. Uh, examine summer learning opportunities for students, and notice there's a change in wording there. It doesn't say support or, or include, it says examine summer learning programs for students. You may want to change that and be more directive about that. The concern is that some students have regressed on their learning, which I think is pretty self-evident. And, uh, we need to think about how to help those students and, and maybe through a, a summer program that, uh, with identified students, uh, w- we could provide some opportunities for them. Mary Ellen, scroll up a little bit because I can't read the last one, I'm down too much on my, my screen, if you can. There is, so support social emotional needs of students post-pandemic. Uh, we think this is going, there is going to be a significant need for guidance, uh, counselors, um, kind of, uh, a social, uh, intervention of some sort as, uh, as we re-enter kids full-time into the schools. So, um, we, we need to have a discussion about, are these the right budget assumptions for the school committee? Uh, there are ones that we're missing, are there ones that you think, um, are, are, are automatically built in, we don't need to make them, make them an assumption because they're going to be there? Uh, because when we start making decisions, I'm always going to go back and refer to this and to say, how, how does the, uh, our budget square with what, uh, charges, uh, from the school committee? Okay, so, uh, shall we begin to have some discussion?
Sure, let's let everybody speak at least once and then we'll move in to see how much time we have.
Yeah.
Jennifer's ready to jump in, go ahead, Jennifer.
Actually, my comments are brief and I, I think this might be the only comment on this subject, unless I come up with something else. But, um, I just wanted to reiterate, and I think you did mention this, I've written this note down before you mentioned it, Dr. Marini, um, that the social emotional needs include the social workers and guidance counselors that we've been talking about for so long.
Yeah.
Support our students especially, uh, you know, based on what's happening this year, and, but this was an, an existing issue prior to, to COVID. And so I really want to support that. And I don't know if anywhere in here are some of the ELL supports as well, we've been very short-staffed in our ELL departments. Well, I think, um, or at least we could make statements that we could use more support. And so I would just like us to, to think about where that might fit in our budget objectives and whether or not, um, you know, it falls in account, you, you, it's a very nice document and I thought it covered a lot of the things that we've been, I've been thinking about, um, and that we've had discussions about. So I like the document a lot and I, those are just the two things I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, who else would like to speak or ask a question? Helen?
On the summer programming, I would prefer for it to say support robust summer programming rather than examine summer program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know where the money's coming from, but I think we have to do it.
That's right.
Andy?
Um, yeah, I mean, while we're talking about those last two items, which are the ones that are trying specifically to sort of address, uh, the damage done by the pandemic.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if i- i- it's worth having somewhat broader language? Um, I mean, I'm totally in favor of looking at social emotional problems, but, uh, really there's academic learning loss, uh, resulting directly from the pandemic and the summer instruction can be part of our response to that. But I think we want to be looking broadly, right, at trying to identify and repair all kinds of academic learning loss that, that came out of remote learning or isolation. I mean, just as an example, right, anyone who was having trouble learning to read is probably, you know, may have fallen further behind as a result of remote learning. And we want to put some resources into identifying people who are going to need extra help, not necessarily in the summer, to repair some of that damage.
Okay, do, do you have a, a, a sense of the wording you'd like to include on that, Andy?
Uh, something along the lines of, you know, identify and repair academic learning loss, uh, in individual students resulting from the pandemic, that would have to be refined, that's my, my.
Yeah, okay.
Other comments? Barbara?
Um, I'm wondering, under the se- uh, section return identified positions to have been named, I am wondering if, um, Colise Warnham is coming back next year. She was on a leave and has her position, is her position still in our budget?
Think, yeah, if you haven't received an email today, uh, then if you haven't, then you'll, you'll receive an email tomorrow. Uh, Colise has resigned and, um, she is going to continue her, uh, her work as a consultant, which she's really achieving a lot of personal affirmation about, and she's actually making a difference in the world. She's working in some of the big city schools like Springfield, uh, and, and really, uh, fulfilling a pretty profound need, not that we don't have a profound need, but she's feeling very good about her work. And so you're going to get an, an email from me that, that describes that, uh, Colise, what she's doing, that she submitted her resignation and I am assembling a group, uh, to look at, uh, it's going to be made up of principals and, uh, some specific program, Alana Group, uh, we're going to include the Metco Group, going to include, uh, Casey as well in terms of, and, and then have a, a planning group to, uh, to try to decide how are we going to, uh, carry on the work that Colise has begun in the district and how, and what is it going to look like? And, uh, so, yes, Colise's position is, uh, it doesn't have to be returned because it's in, it's, it's actually in the budget, uh, Barbara.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Susan?
Yeah, so I really appreciate this list, um, and the, the simplicity of it, so thank you, Jim. Um, I think there's one, it's more of a comment than a, than a question, but actually two comments. One is that over the last couple of overrides, um, in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen, um, there were specific kinds of investments that were envisioned in those overrides. Um, we just talked about one of them, which is, um, the Director of Educational Equity. Um, there were others in terms of funding for restorative justice programming, um, program review money, which became, which was not a one-time thing, it was actually a line item that we added. Um, and there were a variety of other things, and I think it's probably important to go back just to what it is that we sort of said we were going to do in those two overrides. And to the ex, just kind of get a, get an update on those. And it doesn't necess, I don't mean anything grandiose, but just to say, you know, to the extent that we stopped doing them, why, to the extent that we have, are continuing to do them, we don't have, what's that looking like? And if we're, if we're morphing it or we're changing it, what does that look like? Because I think that, um, as we get into budget season and priorities and trade-offs, um, I think it'll just be important for folks to kind of touch base with what it was that, that we thought were the priorities in prior years. Um, and just acknowledge those. And I think that kind of leads to my second question, which is that there's a lot of priorities here. Um, and, and so I think that the question in my mind for, when we're doing strategic priorities is always, so what does this mean we're not doing? Um, as a result, what, what are we not funding? If these are the priorities, what is not a priority? And it's, you know, you can't really prove a negative, so I'm not asking for a list of things that are not priorities. But I think it's important for us to sort of have that as a, i- i- in our minds when we say, you know, going forward, there are many, many, many conversations we've been having about a lot of needs across the system. And so I think we just need to all look at each other and, you know, be very clear and transparent about problems that we have identified and that we have said are important, that are. that are just, that are not going to get funded in this budget. And the reason that's important is so that people don't, are not under the misimpression that either we forgot about them or that somehow we're going to make good on a set of commitments that we're not funding for. And that they're magic, because I think there's a real tendency towards magical thinking. And I really want us at all costs to try to avoid magical thinking.
Okay, very good. Do these two bullet items capture that? One, I don't know about the wording, we'll have to figure out the wording, but include initiatives identified in the 2018 override. And two, show what items we are no longer funding. At least show the items that are not, no longer being funded.
Yeah, I would say 2015 and 2018, anything before that was probably, there was kind of, there were two sets of investments that, those are the kind of the two big ones. But yeah, I think that's about right.
Okay.
And there was the world's language in 2008.
Yeah, well, we're not, I mean, sure, we can go.
Language, which has been funded.
We can go back to 1994. I was trying to keep it sort of simple, which is sort of the last two sets of priorities conversations that we had.
Yeah, I particularly like being transparent about what's not being funded instead of it just disappearing. So that's good. And you're going to get another bite of this apple as, as we you know, bring forth, we're going to be developing the budget on what we have here. And so there'll be a little bit of time between now and on the 21st where we can, you know, zero in on, on, these are the budget assumptions that we're going to be going with. Again, now these are guidelines and, and all of that. So I think that's good. I think that's.
So my, so one thought about, one of the most important is kind of mundane, is adhere to class size guidelines. I suspect that we will have fewer sections in some schools and that we will need that money that we save from the class size reduction to go to things like emotional support, social emotional support, and some of our other priorities. So I do think that's going to drive a lot of, of the budget.
Yeah.
So that's, that's always tough for people to hear. I don't know why, but people don't like to lose classes. But if class sizes down, you know, you might go from a four-section school to a three-section school in some grades. It's possible.
That's right.
Yeah. Mariah?
Thanks Suzanne. I mean, I think that's why I was sort of hung up on this earlier. Is I think we are going to reduce sections, but there's this real risk that if we cut too close to the bone on sections, that we end up with classes that are very large, much larger than we would want to see. So, so striking that balance. And, and I think you're right Suzanne, we are going to see some, some realignment of the number of sections that we have, but making sure that we're not too conservative in that projection. Because, you know, that the classroom is the heart of it, right? So, so what happens there will really make a big difference. So.
Yeah.
Barbara, before I come to you, just, I don't know if David or Dimitri have something they'd like to say? Let them have a shot. If not, I'll go to you.
No, I think a lot of my things have been covered.
Okay, okay, thanks. Barbara, go ahead.
I, just to talk a little bit about the number of classrooms and class size. I think we need to be particularly careful coming year not to have class sizes that are too large. Because given what has happened this year, we are going to find that the classrooms may have many, many more children with emotional needs, with learning needs, all kinds of things that really can be handled more easily if the classrooms have fewer children in them. So I, I would err on the side of being cautious about assuming that we will not need a certain number of classes. I'd rather have small classes, more small classes than more large classes because I think that will, that will be necessary, given what we may find when we go back in the new year in terms of children's needs.
Okay, Barbara, do you think that's covered in support, social emotional needs? Would you rather put a qualifier next to the class size guidelines?
I think, I think I would rather put a qualifying, something qualifying around the class guidelines because the social emotional needs will tend to be people out of the classroom who may be supporting social emotional needs. Supporting social, social emotional needs will not necessarily lead to class sizes that are not too large. So I, I would put it there.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, should we move to the calendar?
Yeah. Can I just say one thing about just that last bit before we move on?
Sure.
That expert panel two has also talked about the importance of sort of pushing, because we don't have enough guidance support, that pushing tier one supports into the classroom through lower numbers also is a way for us to expand our ability to provide social emotional support to a broader range of students. So I'd also like us to think about again, as we look at that bullet on or on enrollment guidelines, not just putting it next to class size, but also to how we do our enrollment projections as well. Again, that this idea of making sure that we have enough room in, in fewer children in the classroom, being somewhat generous or at least not conservative in our, in our projections to enable that to happen. Those all tie in with allowing for appropriate social emotional support. And again, bringing it to a tier one level, which is what panel two has advised. Thank you, Suzanne.
Get that in there, yeah.
Okay, on the calendar, is there something new that you've added or?
No, I think the calendar is the same, begins in August, before Labor Day.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the budget calendar. Move to the other one.
Mary Ellen, you must have the budget calendar.
Yep.
All right. So do you want me to go through this, Jim? You know where we are? All right, so we've passed November and December and we've done a lot of this work already internally with, internally with the staff and working with them around budget requests and what we need them to be doing. We are, hopefully, would be presenting a preliminary budget presentation to the school committee next week. Sorry, on the 21st. And I'm just going to go through some of our typical kind of walkthrough, what kinds of things we need to do on a weekly basis. So the governor's budget comes out generally the January 25th and we hear about chapter 70 and other reports. I do have, and I'll be sharing with the finance subcommittee next week, where the town has come out in terms of our revenue projection for next year. And so the January 25th governor's budget will be helpful to know whether that number is going to stand where it is or whether there'll be some upward movement. So the week of February 1st, we would have a town school partnership meeting that's post the governor's budget to make those adjustments. I believe there's a town school partnership meeting tomorrow. I'm not able to attend the one, that one. No, didn't get scheduled. Mariah, did it get scheduled?
I think it's Monday, isn't it?
Yeah, it's Monday, Monday.
I'm not sure I got that. Anyway.
The invitation came to us today, so you might have missed it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it came in right, right around.
It's at noon on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, so then also that, so February 1st, we would be looking at the governor's budget. February 8th, that week, we would be posting the school department budget, or at least where we are at in our process on our website. So hopefully that would be, that would be open gov this year is what, what we're posting and where we're posting. We will need to have some discussion around what kind of summary reports we want to provide on that platform and what reports we want to write on that platform. February 8th, the advisory committee typically would meet with the, at school advisory subcommittee or the full advisory ahead of the town administrator submitting the balanced financial plan, which is actually due on the 15th of February. Before, the school committee is required by law to have a public hearing for the budget in terms of where we are. Generally, that public hearing would be on the town meeting appropriation. And that we would know February 15th. Although that we all know has been subject to change based on new information that comes through. The bottom line operating budget number is what goes to the financial plan. And the school committee takes into account and budgets both circuit breaker and materials fee as two offsets to our, to our budget. But ultimately, school committee will vote a bottom line budget. That's the school's operating budget that goes to town meeting that gets voted. And then this year, we already anticipated that the final budget allocations will be probably vigorously debated between February and May because we'll have much more information around vaccines and really, really are we coming back in live for September? Do we, are we going to have the RLA, not have the RLA, like what other variables are going to come at us in the spring? So we've sort of, really ideally, we would want to have the allocations planned out and done in time for town meeting. Generally, at least 30 days or around 30 days, 25 to 30 days, we do a town meeting members budget summary for town meeting, which is May 26th. So kind of jumping to March. Ideally, also, we would want to make sure we were posting vacancies and positions in anticipation of funding. So this would be for, if we're doing, this would be a typical year. It would also be if we were looking at reductions in force or, or moving staff from different transfers that we would want to be starting that in February, sorry, in March. We'd also be wanting to queue up any supply orders and having those ready and under contracts done and getting that all started for July 1 purchase order so that materials and supplies arrive on time in September. And then the week of May 24th is town meeting and that's when they vote on the operating budget portion of our budget. So that's what the calendar sort of over, like high level view of the calendar looks like.
Any questions or comments?
So, yeah, thank you. We, we made a number of commitments about this year's budget and information we would get to people and additional resources that we needed to be able to deliver that information. So if we have an update on that, that would be, that would be helpful.
Well.
Do, do people know what that is?
What you're referring to, Susan?
So we committed to town meeting in June that we would give them a budget in November. And I think everyone's been very understanding that, that we have a lot going on. But I also think that just as our fiduciary responsibility, being able to tell people what our budget is for this year, we just need some way to, to deliver on that, on that expectation, especially when we're asking for millions of dollars in additional funds, being able to explain how this year's funds are being used. Is important.
One budget, this budget, the current budget we're in. Yeah.
So that's different than the town meeting document we have posted. That.
Right, but the town meeting document has not been updated. I mean, it's got to be what, 60% incorrect at this point? And how, how much has changed since, since we posted that, the town meeting document last spring?
So, yeah, so no, nothing has been done to update any of those documents because we don't have, we still don't have the staffing capacity to be able to do that piece. We are looking into why open gov is not filtering sort of the expense information through, through. So open gov would be, would have been that, would have been sort of that, the updated version and but again, I also don't have a staff person to actually do wholesale updates on that either. So I guess I want to make sure we're all clear in terms of exactly what that looks like. So we are doing monthly updates and reviews of the, of the budget and quarterly reports. So those should be put, should be posted and I, yeah, staffing, staffing lists are, we're still working on RLA and staffing list and the like. So I can talk to Mariah a little bit more about kind of what that need needs to be and responsive needs to be. And appreciate the point that as we get into 22, people are going to want to really do a comparison of 20, what's 21 and what's 22 and what's coming back, when not coming back.
I'm, I'm hearing though that we made a commitment to, to produce a budget book, a actual document.
I didn't make that, I, I never made a commitment for 300-page book. I did not make that commitment.
Okay, but.
Because open gov is that book now. That was the commitment and we're, in having it updated is not, is slow.
Okay, so I would ask Susan, would you allow me to follow up on that? And then come back and to see how we can fulfill that commitment in a way that'll be satisfactory.
That would be great. And I guess, you know, I don't, I don't want to only put this on town meeting or some external body. Like this is our fiduciary responsibility. We are responsible for hundreds of millions of dollars of taxpayer money. And it's really difficult to be able to stand up to groups and ask for millions of dollars more in reserve fund transfers in a time like this and not be able to tell them how we are spending money now. And I think all of the goodwill that we have been trading on and getting information from people along the way, getting their, getting their patience, getting their understanding for, since last spring, which, which, which we deserve. And they were, you know, they were generous to give us. I think we can't just say, oh, sorry, we're not going to do it and go look at a website. I mean, I think we, the, everyone has been very clear that we need at least some sort of PDF document that someone has to pull from open gov at a point in time because we need to be able to publish it and we need it because open gov changes all the time. We need some documentation of what our budget is on a yearly basis. And it's, it's our job. I don't, I don't, I really, yes, it's an external commitment, but that's actually, I don't only want it to be that.
Helen?
Nice question. So am I hearing you correctly, Mary Ellen, that we're not going to have a budget book even for this year?
Correct. We moved to open gov last year and the town moved to open gov last year. So we were not producing. They do not have a 300-page town financial plan document. They have a PDF. They converted some things to PDF, but they're moving to, because they, they, that's what they chose to do. So their pages are PDFs. We chose to leave of as open, open gov and the 21 budget is there plus the 20 budget and actual expenditures is there. And not produce a 300-page document. So we are, so we were trying to lockstep in with the town.
Did we, we approve this? I don't.
Yeah, we had a discussion about.
I don't remember.
No, in fact, the discussion, yeah, to the contrary, the discussion was that there are a large number of people on town meeting in particular who still want papers mailed to them at their homes. They don't even want a PDF. They want a printout. And so to the extent that we're not going to do anything, I just, I don't think that is a discussion, a decision that we made.
We did do a town meeting booklet that we. We did do a town meeting booklet that we've always done. So the point about updating it, that town meeting book, that small executive summary that we do for town meeting, that, you know, I can look at that about what we need to do to update that based on the special town meeting appropriation.
Yeah, that's a PowerPoint document, though. That's not a.
No, no, there's a book. No, it's a PDF. It's a thirty-page PDF.
Yeah. So Jim, I think maybe we'll ask you to kind of follow up on this, if you would. Hope you're on mute, but.
I, I do, I do have, um, this is probably the document that Mary Ellen's referencing. Uh, but I, I do, and which is, it is an executive, it looks like an executive summary. It's not a PowerPoint. But, uh, yeah, I, I think I should, I should follow up. The last thing in the world we need, uh, the school department spends the lion's share of the money in the town. And, uh, and, and we obviously need to, uh, to show how the money is, is being spent in a way that's accessible. I don't know about the o- open gov. That's, that's a relatively new thing. Um, it's a new thing to, to Brookline, but whether it is or it isn't, I mean, would, if people have access to it electronically, I don't know. Let, let me follow up on and get some, uh, and see if I can get some direction on that. Even as we do our own budget process.
Right.
That, that's going to be interesting too. So I will follow, I will definitely follow up on that.
Thank you. And, and, and we'll be back and we'll come back to this topic as well. Um, the next item is the school calendar, second reading for next year. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
I think we got it last time. There've been no changes since last time, correct?
That's right.
And, and this has gone to the BEU for their.
The BEU has, has agreed with this calendar as a one-year only.
Right.
Because it begins before Labor Day, as you see, and that's not, that's not traditional. So they said they would agree one year only because of the way the calendar falls and where Labor Day is and some of the other holidays that, uh, are in the calendar would push us way late. So they agreed for this year to begin before Labor Day. So that's the calendar.
Do I have a motion to accept the calendar? Thank you, Barbara. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Do we have any conversation, questions, comments before we vote? Mariah?
I, I have a separate question, which was just about last time. We talked about the other calendar. And then Jim, you sent us the following your calendar, the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. Sorry, there's a lot of.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you. No.
And I was just wondering if we were going to ever vote, like, how does that get public? So that's not really about this calendar, but about the general calendar. I don't know if that's the right time to ask the question.
I, I think what you're asking about Mariah is a two-year calendar. Yeah, and, and I, I, I followed up on that. I guess the system did a one, a two-year calendar once. And, um, I met with the, uh, with the union about it, actually, about developing a, a two-year calendar. And, uh, the union is, uh, was not completely opposed to developing a two-year calendar. They, they did not want to engage in it now because they feel this was way too much on the plate to be thinking about not only this coming year, but the year following that. And that if we wanted to actually deal with a two-year calendar, we should begin talking about that, um, in, in the fall, um, not, uh, even though it's voted at this time. So they said they did it. It was done once. For some reason, I don't know. But it's not, it, it wasn't a traditional thing that's happened in the district. So they, um, not opposed to it, but, uh, they, they would like to have more planning around it when, uh, if it's going to go forward.
Thank you.
Okay, so no other hands raised. We will take a vote. Um, Jennifer?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And Helen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, we are up to policies. David?
All right, so we have, uh, multiple policies up for a vote tonight. This is the third time that we're addressing, um, most of them and second time for one of them. So leading off with the proposed policy on immunizations, there were a couple of slight changes that were made to the version that, uh, was made available in your folder. And then there were a couple other tweaks that Mariah made, uh, that I believe was also added to the folder about an hour before our meeting started tonight. Essentially, the one change is to, um, mention the frequency by which immunization records are to be provided uh, to the school department and it will be after a child's first, um, day of attendance in a school year and annually thereafter. Uh, I tried to solicit the input of, um, Patricia La Ham about this change. Uh, I was not able to get into contact with her, but from earlier conversations with her, I did not get the sense that she would object to this language. So it will be my recommendation that, uh, we move this policy forward and approve it. Any quest, comments, questions?
But let's just get, that's the motion. Do we have a second to the motion? Mariah, thank you. Okay, any questions, comments before we vote? This is on the immunization policy. Okay, we'll take the vote. We'll make it happen. Uh, Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Susan? Did I lose Susan? Well, I'm out of lost her. Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Susan, are you there? Okay, we'll, we'll move on. Okay, next one.
All right, so the next policy for consideration that I, I would like to, uh, put up for a vote is the policy against discrimination, harassment, sexual harassment and retaliation. There have been some further changes to this since the last time, uh, that it was reviewed. The changes are, are somewhat significant. Um, Maria Letas at, made a lot of the additional changes. Uh, once again, to try to comply with changes to Title Nine. Um, then also there was a lot added to the section on reports. This is in response to some public comments we received. Uh, a lot of the language that I added to that section, uh, comes directly from the state legislature. Uh, the pub, the same public commenter who had asked that we take, that we look at the reporting section and make it more robust, had, uh, also sent me language that was just approved January sixth, uh, specific to sexual discrimination. So that worked out quite nicely. So essentially I modified the language slightly just to make it applicable to, uh, K-12 school districts because the language was written in such a way, uh, to apply to universities. But essentially Title Nine is a requirement for schools at all levels. So it would be my recommendation that we adopt the same language as the state legislature. Uh, and this would also be respecting what, uh, many members on the, so, on the policy subcommittee at least had stated a commitment to robust reporting. And that was also a concern expressed by, uh, many, uh, of our community members. Then another area of change is in the classifications, uh, for protected classes. So at our last meeting, there had been a discussion about whether to include, uh, economic class. Upon further review, the, uh, town anti-discrimination policy, uh, does not include economic class or receipt of public benefits. It's, there was a town bylaw on inclusion. Uh, inclusion is different than anti-discrimination. But I think that the, uh, point that was raised about shouldn't we include, uh, economic class? The spirit behind that, I believe, was to not be, uh, harassing students based on their, uh, family's income level or housing. So I did add some, uh, language to that effect, but not in the section on protected classes. But in a section, uh, as an example of areas that go beyond the legal definitions for protected classes at the state and federal level, where, uh, the schools would not be uh, limited from being more restrictive in, uh, seeking compliance with the code of conduct. And the, and that paragraph was already there before in our prior, uh, anti-discrimination policy. So all I really did was mention economic class specifically as an example of an area where we could be extending, uh, code of conduct compliance. So I, I think that hopefully effectively addresses the issue about the, the spirit behind wanting to make sure that our students are not harassed based on their family's income level. Uh, also housing status was added there as well. So those were essentially the main changes since the last draft that you have seen. Uh, I would recommend that we put this up for a vote.
Do I have a second to the, thank you, Andy. Any comments, questions before we vote? Andy?
Yeah, um, I do have one remark. Uh, so like when we discussed this policy in subcommittee, uh, we paid a lot of attention to the provision that, uh, PSP should publish a grievance process, uh, for responding to complaints of harassment. Uh, so Maria Letas has been working on the, the complaint procedure, which is a separate document from the policy that we're looking at here. Uh, I just wanted to let everyone know, like, a priority here is to make sure, like, for the public that, uh, the complaint procedure gets laid out in an easy-to-follow flowchart or decision tree. Um, so that anyone who needs to file a complaint, uh, can easily find out like what to do, what to expect and on what timeline. Um, so as we move into implementing the policy, we're just very interested in making sure that the procedure, like, once it gets finalized is, um, clear and accessible for everybody.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Okay, seeing no hands, we will take a vote. Uh, Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Susan? Are you there? Lost her. Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Susan, are you there for the vote? Okay, okay. Okay, David, it's yours again.
All right, so next up we have the yearbook policies. There have been two slight revisions from the last version and these revisions are reflective of input that we received from K-eight administrators as well as yearbook advisors. I want to thank Jim for, uh, reaching out to them and encouraging them to get back to me. Many of them did ultimately get back to me. So, uh, this dra, this latest draft is a reflection of input from five of our schools, which I'm, I'm very pleased by. Uh, and a lot of the points that were made by the administrators were very focused on the procedural aspect about how to do cross-checking with, uh, enrollment lists and the Aspen system and very detailed. I think that's something that would be more appropriate for the procedures that will be, uh, promulgated, uh, soon after ratification of this policy. But a couple of, uh, more substantive points for policy purposes that came up that I have since added. Uh, so one issue that was raised is what do we do about students who enroll in school after the yearbook publication date? Obviously, we can't include people who were not in the school system yet in the yearbook and we're not going to republish the yearbook. And, uh, so there is a line that's been added, essentially saying that if someone joins the school, that the student comes to, um, a particular school after the publication date for that school, then it would be acceptable to not include that student in the yearbook that's already been published. I think that's fairly obvious, but it was not part of our last, uh, draft. So that's been added. And then the other change was pointed out by one of the yearbook advisors that, uh, sometimes there could be a relatively small, uh, error that's very obvious on its face in a student submission. Maybe there's an extra space, maybe a comma's in the wrong place, maybe it's a, a clear and obvious typo. And do we really want to be triggering the notification of, uh, parents, guardians, caretakers and students uh, about a, a modification for a student's yearbook entry just on that slight basis? Uh, I thought that was a reasonable point, so I just qualified, uh, the triggering language to say if it's going to be a, a material modification as opposed to being any modification. Other than that, there are, uh, no changes. And I would just recommend that when the procedures are being worked on, uh, that the yearbook editors are able to have a very clear understanding of how they're going to be able to do the list cross-checks so that none of our students fall through the proverbial cracks in terms of inclusion.
Thank you, David. Do I have a second to that?
Well, I'll second, but I have a question, Jim.
Okay, go right ahead, Helen. Thank you for seconding.
David, you had said something about, um, if somebody comes in after the yearbook has been published. But that happens at the end of the year. So, but the pictures and all those things are usually taken at the beginning of the year, correct?
Yes. So essentially the concern was if you submit a yearbook for publication, let's just say it's March fifteenth and the student shows up in April. Uh, now, maybe there would still be time to get that student in. So the language says May, it's just permissive. Uh, but i- if it's too late, it's too late. And I think it would be understandable.
Okay, so, but it's clear that it's not when it's published, meaning they get the, the book, but rather when it's submitted for publication.
Right, so could make that change, make it more clear.
That would be.
Submitted for publication.
Submit it. Okay, that, that's all I wanted to make sure that, you know, there was some opportunity if possible, but when it's submitted, it's over.
Okay, so subject to that edit of saying when submitted for publication as opposed to publication, I would like to move that we approve the yearbook policy.
Aye, and Helen? You seconding it?
I'll second again.
Okay, thanks. Any other comment or question? Okay, we'll vote. Um, Helen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, David, did you have one more? Are we doing the roles and norms tonight or no?
So I'm, uh, I'll ask that to Dimitri. Dimitri, would you like us to?
No, I think we wanted to be able to do the rules and norms at the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Policy Subcommittee for getting this done, Helen.
Yeah, could I ask one question? The rules and norms for the subcommittees. Why would that be a policy as opposed to guidelines for the school committee that we, you know, update whenever we, whenever a new school committee comes on? And we've never, I don't think it's ever been a policy, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it is a policy. I thought we just sent it to Policy Committee to help us get the rules and norms.
That's right. Yeah, it was delegated to us, yeah.
Okay.
They, they were just generous enough to take it on.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
I would add, though, that, uh, in our policy handbook, we actually have quite a few policies about school committee member responsibilities and about how school committee is supposed to operate. So a lot of that actually is in our policy, although many of those policies have not been touched since the nineteen seventies.
Well, when we're bored, we can take a look. It might be interesting.
They can stay in the nineteen seventies.
We're moving on to subcommittees and liaison reports. We're not hearing from everybody, but, uh, those who have something to tell, uh, should speak up. I have government relations. Actually, two things for you, Helen, government relations and superintendent search.
Two quick sentences. Please come to government relations, everybody. Um, you all got the, uh, priorities that we sent out. Um, this is a conversation that I want us to be able to have with our legislators. Okay, that's one. And, uh, Robin, have we gotten confirmation that everybody's coming? I hope.
We haven't heard from everyone, but, um, we're still waiting to hear from a couple and I will try to check in with them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And two, the superintendent's search, school committee's search committee will be meeting together with the, uh, superintendent's search public advisory committee. Sorry about these names, but they go on, uh, on Monday night, uh, to, uh, just as an organizational meeting and, um, the superintendent, um, uh, submissions, uh, hopefully will be in by January fifteenth. So we're moving forward. Just wanted everybody.
Helen, you want to put a plug in for the surveys again, just?
Oh, so thank you so much for reminding me. Yes. Wherever, I don't know if, uh, David, you had sent it out to the town meeting list, sir, correct?
That's correct, yes.
You may want to remind them if they want to fill it out. You may want to remind them if they want to fill it out. I'm pretty sure we put it, uh, Robin, you put it out to the world, correct?
Yes, it was widely distributed.
Right, um, and I know there was a a person who, uh, from the public who attended our last meeting who put it out on Facebook. So um, I don't know, Mariah, if you want to put it out on Facebook, the link to the survey?
Jonathan Golden, who's a member of the.
Yeah, I know, he did it. I saw that.
So I mean, I think we could do it again, but I feel like he did a pretty good job of getting it out there.
Okay, but let's.
He also posted in many other Facebook groups and, I mean.
I must say, I haven't.
I haven't seen him anymore responses there were, but he did a good job voting it anyway.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you to Jonathan Golden, then. He's been, he's been staying on top of it, so we appreciate that. Uh, and just one other thing, Helen, just, I don't know if we do say this, but uh if people know of people who might be good candidates to be a superintendent, the best way to get candidates is by word of mouth.
Right.
So if you know somebody or know somebody who knows somebody, um, now is the time to give them a call or.
And we are, and in addition, we are recruiting people. So if people know of people, they can certainly contact me with uh names, and we can make sure that um our recruitment uh firm will will reach out to these people too, in addition to you possibly reaching out to them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have a a report from subcommittees or liaison? We're actually almost done. Uh, under new business, we have new business. I just want to mention that the MLK uh celebration this year will be virtual, and I assume people have gotten uh emails about it, but I don't remember if this, I think there's a registration, right? And so it's always a wonderful celebration, so take a look at that and when it comes in your emails.
I don't think I've received an email about it yet, but I'll I'll just make sure.
Okay, I can send mine to, I can forward mine to Robin, or I can forward it to the school committee.
Great.
I forget how I got it, but anyway, it it looks like a good program, as it always is, as it always is. Um, other, any other new business? Okay, so it turns out we don't need an executive session, so we actually are done on time. Jim, do you want to have the final word? We always like to give you the final word. You're on mute.
Right. I was gonna say, without an executive session, it's like we're all working half a day today.
I. I know, I know.
No, good job.
Okay, okay, everyone. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.